Welcome everybody to the zoning Board of Appeals meeting for November 20th, 2019. And the first thing we need to do is to review the minutes from the October meeting. Did everybody get a chance to review the meeting minutes and also the various changes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. Any additional changes, questions, concerns about the meeting minutes from the October 16th meeting?
No.
No? All right. I will make a motion that we approve the October 16th meeting minutes as amended by, you know, the various changes that were suggested to Chris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Right, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? All right, carry. Okay, we have one matter of new business, and that's on the Etna matter. So, believe you're here for that?
I am.
All right. You've been through this process before.
I have.
Okay. You know that what we're doing here is simply looking at the application to see whether it is sufficient enough for us to accept it for consideration.
Okay.
And what we would like you to do is to just walk us through the application and explain to us what the applicant wants to do.
Can you tell me what slide you want to...
Oh, thanks. Let's just start with the site plan.
So, I'm Darren Midwich. I'm with my firm's The Art Building, and I'm here on behalf of the Etners who own 41 Violet Hill Road. Violet Hill Road is between Route 308 and Route 92. And the property we're talking about tonight is pretty much directly in line with where Burger Road intersects Violet Hill Road. What makes this property particularly interesting from a zoning standpoint is that it's 18 acres in size, and it's in the RC-5 zone, so it's a little over three and a half times the required acreage for this zoning district, which is basically the basis for our argument, which involves the number of structures on the property. Currently, there's three structures on the property. There's a existing house at 3,830 square feet. That's the main residence. There's a small shed here, and that shed is about 360 square feet in size. And then, to the back of the driveway here, there's a garage which also serves as a glass blowing studio. And that garage or barn is 1,550 square feet in size. So, in the current situation, we have these three structures, one, two, and three. And what's proposed, so John and I have proposed site plan, and you, what's the second? So, what we're proposing is the addition, two additional structures. What we'd like to build is a three-car garage in this location, which you remember is the existing location of the shed. So, the proposal is just to shift this shed off the driveway a little bit, so that the garage can be on the driveway, which makes sense, because if you're going to park cars in, if you want it to be on the driveway. But we keep the shed intact and just move it to a new foundation, just off of its existing location. And then, the second structure that's proposed is a, we'll call it a pool house, but it's really going to be proposed as a detached accessory dwelling, so that there's some overflow bedrooms for guests and family members when they come into town. But it'll serve a dual purpose. It'll be both a pool house and a detached accessory dwelling when guests visit. So, the issue we run up against is that this would give us, instead of three existing structures, this would give us a total of five structures, which is too many structures under roof in the zoning district. And it also causes an issue with the total number of square feet under roof in the zoning district. And the argument that we're, you know, planning to make is that we have 18 acres in a zone that is a five-acre zone. So, given the fact that we have three times the required area, given the parcel size, I feel there's justification to add two additional structures to the property. And then, in support of the application, we submitted a number of things, including photos of the existing structures. Thanks a lot.
So, there's two variances required. One is just for the one additional accessory structure, and then the other's square footage. The allowed square footage is 1,500. Looks like it's going to be about 3,800 altogether.
3,800 altogether.
So, you're looking at 2,300 and change.
I don't know if it makes any difference, but the pool house is listed on the site plan as being two-bedroom, but the drawings are...
Yeah, the drawings are a bit of a work in progress, so I'm going to submit those. As we move along, they'll get to be a better and better state of affairs, but the intention is definitely a two-bedroom, and keeping it at the 900 square foot cap for a detached accessory dwelling, so we don't plan to seek any variance from that.
Is there going to be a kitchen in that pool house?
There is.
And a bathroom?
I'm sorry?
And a bathroom?
Kitchen and a bathroom. It's really designed to be a detached accessory dwelling. We just tend to refer to it more often as the pool house, because it's adjacent to the pool. So, the fact that you can share your kitchen when you're outside of the pool and go inside and get a cold drink or something like that, or use the bathroom, is nice, but really it's intended to be a detached accessory dwelling for the zoning code.
And you're not proposing to balance the argument about adding these beyond the code of proposals, because the property is three times larger than them, so it allows with a de-restriction, the fact it would prevent further dwelling in the future. There's some...
Um, we weren't proposing it.
Yeah.
You know, I tend to shy away from de-restrictions, just because looking into the future's hard. So, it's hard to anticipate what there needs to be, and get anything else that would need to come before this board, but there are no other plans for this property. In fact, the Colonel has planned it for quite some time, and they've done it with the property for a very long time, just waiting for the right idea, and, you know, so I don't think they're developing crazy plans.
Where's that bedroom going to be? Is it going to be one, two, or how many?
Two.
Two? Second floor?
Uh, it would be on the second floor, yeah.
Yeah, because I'm just looking at that. These are the plans that they...
They're the work in progress.
The work in progress.
So, they would be the upper level. The lower level would be sort of the partial level, which would be some mechanicals for the pool.
It looks like on page one, you have a fairly detailed plan of where the kitchen's going to be, and the bathroom, all that kind of stuff. Do you foresee that changing, or is that pretty much...
I think, you know, within the next couple of weeks, I'll have a much more detailed version of this.
We're going to... And I'm sorry, I...
No, what we really wanted to get in was just sort of some exterior elevations, and the thought that this needs to go through planning, and we also need second control for the number of bedrooms. So, we're going to have a whole approval process ahead of us, and we're going to attach it to itself, so that you're well inside of things.
Yeah, I know we're only dealing with variances here, but we would like to have a very firm idea of what's going to be on the first floor and what's going to be on the second floor. And the second floor, it just looks like it's blank at this point, so I know we have some work to do with it.
Yeah.
Before we would be able to, you know, really rule on this thing, we're beginning at that absolute plan, so we know what we're looking at.
Sure, and I could add a presentation for next meeting and walk through what the floor plans are.
For the public hearing.
Yeah, no problem. And then, the garage is fairly simple, the three-car garage, just, you know, single level, three bays of room.
So, they're going to be having plumbing in the garage?
No.
And that stays the same, that's just being moved, pretty much?
Oh, well, the shed's being moved. Shedding being allowed, the three-car garage to be built. So, the shed can be moved off the driveway.
Okay.
And then, three-car garage is pretty much as simple as it sounds. It's just three bays of garage space. It may or may not even have to be made. The father's just put some minimal being in there, just to make it tolerable if you wax the car or something in the winter time, but more than likely, it's not going to have that.
And it's going to look like it's proposed?
Yes, that's fully there.
That's perfect. No changes to the main house or anything like that?
No, nothing proposed.
And nothing changing to the barn?
No.
Same?
Maybe some siding at some point, but, you know, any siding, I think, as the other structures come along, they'll want to dress up.
But nothing inside?
No.
Any other questions, concerns? My only concern is just having very firm plans, and so you'll have that by the next meeting?
Absolutely.
That's going to be a requirement for us to move forward at, assuming we schedule a public hearing, we're going to need to have that information and know exactly what we're looking at.
In advance of the meeting.
In advance of the meeting, yeah. Like to have at least a week.
Sure.
And did you say that this, the two new bedrooms would be used in the existing septic system, or would be new?
There'd be a new septic. The distance from the existing septic system and the fact that it's not sized for it means we'd be looking to put a new septic even closer to this building. And that's in process with such a pounding of pressure.
And new well as well?
A new well as well. Yeah, just a fairly rocky site, just topography and other reasons, it makes sense to put a second one.
All right, I mean, it's a fairly detailed plan. Again, my only misgivings are what I've stated so far, and you'll have that to us at least a week before the public hearing, so...
Absolutely.
I think the application is pretty complete for us to consider what is being proposed. What are the thoughts of the other board members? Any other questions or concerns?
Just because the number of bedrooms is going to affect the overall direction. So, I'd agree with Scott.
I just want to see where they are, how many, you know, the number. I know you said two, but I want to see.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if there's any changes on the first floor, you know, include that. We just want to have exactly what is going on.
Absolutely.
All right, so I make a motion at this time that we accept the application subject to the revised plans with regard to the core pool house. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right. Anybody want to volunteer for this application? I'm not sure who's up next.
I'll volunteer.
You want it? Okay, so Dave's going to take it. The recommendation by counsel is that this is a type-two action under Sec. 617-5C12, which is a construction expansion or replacement of minor accessory apartment residential structures, including garages, et cetera. I think that's right, so I'd make a motion that we deem this to be a type-two action under Sec. 617-5C12. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the only referral is to the planning board, John?
Yes.
Okay. And again, I just make a motion at this time that we place the matter on the agenda for the December meeting, which I believe is December 18th. Is that correct, Chris?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd make a motion that we put this on the public hearing calendar for December 18th, 2019. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I should have asked you before you made that application. Can you make it here on December 18th?
Yes.
No problem.
Site visit, do you want one?
Yeah, absolutely, we're going to have a site visit. And when we do the site visit, you can, things are going to be moved out, or things are going to be put in different places. We need to have it staked yet, just to have an idea.
Sure.
Okay, and that'll probably happen maybe in the next month. It could happen between the public hearing and the time we do a resolution.
Okay.
So, but, so there's no real urgency. The main thing is for you to get those revised plans built as soon as possible.
Okay. You guys will be in touch about this.
We'll be in touch.
Are you using the point of time?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we get that on beforehand? Yeah, you're right, it is, and I missed that. Okay. Well, before we go off, the last piece of new business, before we get to the public hearings, is that there was a proposal that we change the meeting to start at 7:00 instead of 7:30. Does anybody have any questions, concerns, objections, whatever, about changing it from 7:30 to 7:00? It seemed like everybody was more convenient for that. I think it gives the public enough time to get here after work and that kind of stuff. Okay. All right, then, I'd make an application, make a motion that we move the starting time from 7:30 to 7:00 PM, starting in January of 2020.
Approving the schedule as well?
Approving the schedule, and approving the entire schedule. We're actually provided a schedule by Chris for the various dates during the course of the year. So, I'll make a little application, one that we change the time from 7:30 to 7:00, and then we adopt the schedule that has been provided to us by Chris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. All right, next, we have a bunch of public hearings on today, this evening. So, the way this works is that the applicant comes up, they explain what they want to do, and John will do his best to put up whatever renderings need to be put up. If people are interested in the application, please come up, state your name, state where you live, and also state your concerns. There can be questions, you can state your opinion, you can just say your piece, okay? The only thing I do ask, and that I do insist at our meetings, we are not like Washington here. We are civil, all right? And I understand we're dealing with property rights, and people have strong opinions, and that's great, and I love to see all the people in the audience here. But, we don't tolerate ad hominem attacks, or just being mean and nasty. We want to hear what your opinions are, but we, everybody is urged to be respectful. Reasonable minds can differ, and the other person could be right. So, please, keep your comments as focused as they can be on the issue, and as respectful as possible. I would just ask for that. All right, with that said, the first one's Patron. Is somebody here for Patron? Come on up.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. All right, do you want to take us through the application? Is there anybody here who is interested in the Patron application?
Put the picture up here.
Anybody here for Patron?
Just show me which one you want. It's on the side there, right by the phone.
I'd like to give you a little history of the property. I live on a, I was a 90-old man in Forest Road. I live on a quarter of an acre, and what you see here is my potential deck that Curren is working on. This, over here, this used to be four feet high, was terraced back, and over here, it was approximately two and a half feet high. So, for me to get from one section of my property to the next section of my property, I would have had to build platforms. I decided to remove the dirt from here, and terrace it, get rid of the terraces, and remove the dirt down, so that I would make it easier to maintain my property. The second thing was, as you can see, this is pretty sloped. In order for me to basically maintain my property, I can't use a lawnmower. I have to use a weed whacker in order to cut the lawn. So, what I put in, it attached to my existing deck, gave another deck in, so that I have, everything is on one level, so I don't have to go move from one level to another level to enjoy my property. And I'm currently 10 feet from the property line, but I did not realize that where I live, I need a side setback of 37 and a half feet. I don't have 37 and a half feet on my side setback, so requesting a 10-foot variance in order to complete my deck. And I wanted everything on one level, because I'm getting older, my ability is doing all this there. I think it's one of enjoying my property and share it with others, and the only way to do it was to expand my deck in order to accommodate other family members. Just a little history, on the back of my house, I put a handicap lamp. I've got family members that have MS, and I wanted to make it easy, because one has a walker, and another one has a cot, you know, the little cot that you have to ride. So, I keep everything on one level, and make it easy, so that we can enjoy the place. So, I need a 10-foot variance. If anybody has a objection, I'd love to hear it. If you want to see what I'm doing, I'd more than gladly share it with you, but I would really appreciate this getting approved.
And this is Mr. Patron, and actually, the variance is 27.5 feet, because 37.5 is required, and you got 10, so you need 27.5, but it's just one side yard setback that's being requested here, because of the topography and all that. Anybody here for this application? Board members, does, do anybody, anybody here have a question as to the application?
No, we'll set up a site visit.
Right. We need to come out and take a look at the site, so we'll do that. Can we just give you a call? I assume your contact information?
Yeah, I have this form.
Okay.
Sure, anytime.
Richard, when you set it up, let me know.
Make it enjoyable.
I don't think we can do that.
Well, this is in Washington, you know, it's very transparent.
No, if it was in Washington, they'd be doing a lot more. We're not going to go there. Anyway, but thank you.
All right, just let me know when you want to come.
Is the weekend okay?
Sure.
Weekend?
Yeah.
How is 10:00 AM next Saturday?
10:00 AM next Saturday?
Yes.
Works for me. Not this coming Saturday, the following Saturday.
Right.
At the Thanksgiving.
Oh, it's right after Thanksgiving.
Okay.
All right, and I'll see. They may change, but we'll start with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Keep me on the email chain, Richard. All right, since there's nobody from the audience, and board members seem satisfied, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, at this point in time, I'd make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, what that means is that we have 62 days from tonight to give you a resolution on this application. In the meantime, we woke them out and visited the site.
Okay.
And I anticipate that we'll probably have a resolution ready by next meeting, so you can tell you about our finding.
Okay.
So, we'll see.
Sounds good. I look forward to your company on Saturday at 10:00 AM.
Okay.
I'll have coffee for you.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak before your audience.
Thank you, Mr. Patron. You're done.
Thank you. Good luck to everybody else.
Yes, flee. Okay, so that's Mr. Patron. The next matter that's up is Jacob. Is there somebody here for that? Yes.
Hello?
Hello.
I've battled with my phone before, apologize. Think I remember the things I was supposed to say. Jordan Valina, Synergy Design, here to represent the Jacob property, 1135 Street, 35 Wall Street, excuse me, for an addition to a carriage house. Should I continue with the details?
Yeah, just, let me ask you this. Is there anybody here for this application? Jacob? Well, give us your script.
Okay, so there is an existing, oh, it's a 10.56 acre property. This is a property immediately west, adjacent to the Star Library property. It has a number of structures, a residence, and a few accessory structures, one of which is this carriage house garage. And there's a pool house without bedrooms, and there is a cottage down at the back. The proposal here is to add a 468 square foot addition to this existing two-bedroom carriage house. The carriage house space being on the second floor.
Right, and maybe, John, you can put that up for the...
What, elevation?
Or the proposed...
Yeah, maybe the, a good start on the sheet, the proposed addition sheet, right there, so it'd be a good start, and then we'll... Yeah, so, yeah, here's Rhine Cliff Road, Wall Street, here's the primary residence, here's the carriage house garage, and the, which has an existing 2.3 foot setback existing for that building, and we're stepping this back about nine foot, 10 and a half inches to put this proposed single-story addition on that. And the purpose for the addition is to allow his son and the son's wife and their baby to be able to kind of use the space without having to climb the stairs every time. Bedrooms are still on the second floor. There is a change to the proposal, and that we are not proposing to add a bedroom. You know, that is not exactly what the variance talk is in regards to, but I'm just letting you know, we've assessed the soils for septic, and they're very restrictive. It's slow percolating, it's not worth it. So, that is the, that's the proposed project.
When you say Wall Street, is that street or driveway?
It's a driveway, oddly enough. It has a street name for some reason.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, that is the official address, 1115 and 35 are the three structures. I don't know how that is, but...
Maybe you can put up the existing structure, just to show what it looks like.
Absolutely. Yes, the next page shows both existing and proposed. Yeah, the floor plans sheet, the one before that. Just to see the floor plans, for existing and proposed, and you can see the elevations? Yeah, it, you can see it more on the proposed, and what's easy about getting it, I think, with the proposed, is that this is very close to what's existing. What we did was we moved a bedroom to this corner that now has the view out over the shoulder of Farm. So, one of these bedrooms basically just moved to this side, where right now, there is an office. It's actually an office. And a deck, where they can walk out on top of this first-floor addition. And of course, the kitchen, which is up here right now, kind of the kitchen is in here right now, is being moved down to this first-floor kitchen and living space in the addition. And then, if you want, you could see it in the elevation view and see what it all looks like.
So, how many bedrooms are proposed?
Two are existing, and two will be, shall remain. Yeah, yeah. Here's existing, very, very simple gable-type structure. And, here's the proposed. So, this is the addition right here. This is looking, the hill behind here goes up, the library's kind of over here, the pool is kind of over here, but both up beyond this hill. That's kind of the orientation. And then, this would be looking from the backyard, further in, you know, away from Rhine Cliff Road, looking back towards Rhine Cliff Road, that's where you get this view. So, you don't really see it from the road.
The main structure, or the existing structure is about two and a half feet from the lot line. The new structure is going to be...
About 10 feet, nine from 10 and a half.
There's actually probably a photograph you can bring up, just to show, it shows the topography and how close the...
Yeah. Oh, the...
Yeah. Well, it's... Is this, yeah, this one?
Yeah, this whole thing kind of slopes, gently slopes down this way. Gets the, the drainage kind of of the land kind of goes this way across, out towards the farm. But, standing there, it's not an appreciable grade, I feel fairly glad. Oh, that photograph.
Yeah, this, I think this shows the best.
Oh.
It shows what's there, it just shows you how close the back slope is.
Where is that? I should have emailed that. It's possible, I wonder if it's possible, no, I'm not sure if you mailed that. Transmittal narrative, sign, sign, septic.
There's actually, there's a front view, which is, shows the front of the structure right here. And then, the next one shows the side view, which gives a good perspective of, let's say, it's a hill in the background.
Yes, exactly. Or somehow, we don't have them digitally. Yeah. So, I have to make sure you have those photographs, so I know when we...
Well, we have them.
Okay, good.
Again, anybody from the audience who would like to ask any questions or have any concerns? Anybody from the board who has any questions or concerns? No? No? So, have you done a sit, visit yet, or is it... Okay, we need to schedule that. All right, let me just... All right, let me just, December eighteenth, well, no, we're, we're here already, so, because I think there aren't any questions, we're pretty firm on what you want to do. I make a motion that we close the public hearing at this point in time. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye? All right, we have sixty two days to give you a resolution. In the meantime, we will come out for a site visit. Should we go through you?
Yeah, that, that works as well as anything and I'll go to by the property manager, Gloria.
Yeah, we'll probably be looking at something, the weekends are easier for us.
Okay. Yeah, it'd probably be hard to...
At least some of us, most, most of us, the ones who are still working. All right, so we'll, we'll be in contact with you. Tim, I think this is yours?
Yeah.
And so do you coordinate the visit?
I'll coordinate through Chris.
Through Chris? Great, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll see you in the next, you know, couple of weeks or so.
Sounds good.
Great. Oh, I know, is stakeout the addition?
Uh, yes.
It is?
And I'll make sure it's...
Make sure it's stakeout, we have exact, you know, the exact...
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it's... I just need some clarification in terms of the bedrooms.
Okay. Let me just ask you, if you might, last question, would you like to...
With the change in the plans, is there any change? Or are you just changing the building layout of what room?
We're actually changing the layout, yeah. Removing a kitchen from the second floor, putting it in the addition on the first floor. So it's actually physically changing up there.
Is it changing the outside perimeter?
No. Oh, not on the second, well, the addition is a change to the outside perimeter, but nothing else.
Maybe you can get me a, get us a updated floor plan.
Oh, absolutely.
But...
Yes.
Before, maybe you can give us a site visit.
Okay, yeah, or certainly before digitally, we can, because we've already developed it.
Okay.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is the Dolberg case. Is somebody here for that? Come on up and state your name, address, and...
Hi, my name is Jeanne Slus, I'm the architect of the Dolberg, I live from Macarney, Kentucky. And she approached us about, this project is a little bit unique because the structures already exist. So we're not building anything on the site, on the, there are photos if you want to see this one.
Okay, and by the way, are there folks here for this application? Jessica? Okay, so what, what she's going to do is she's going to go through what the application is all about. There are going to be photographs and things like that that are part of the application to show what is being proposed. When she is done, if you have questions or concerns, please come on up, give me your name, give me your address, and you can ask questions or express your concerns about the, the application, okay? All right, so, if you could just take us through the application.
Yes, so currently, this structure exists on the property. It has a two car garage here and one car garage in the back of the car. This is another two car garage that exists. The proposal was to alter the use of this structure to make it into a one bedroom accessory structure because the applicant has a sister that is terminally ill and she would like to care for her, she's a nurse. There is no intention to rent it or sell it or do anything like that, that's the gist of it. And that's the uniqueness of this project, is that this structure already exists. We are not adding anything outside of what's there, we're just changing the garage door into an empty door and a window maybe, but everything else remains the same.
What is in there currently?
Currently, it's a garage, it's storage.
Are there any kitchens, any bathrooms?
There is a bathroom there, yes.
Okay, any, anything else that is in there?
There is a lack, there is a bathroom.
Okay, do you have photographs of what is shown, of what's actually in there? We have some photographs there.
I'm not sure if I have any to view of this.
Are they part of your application?
It's part of my, the drawings. It is part of the documents, if you look at the drawings, it should be the existing.
Just a second.
Okay.
So it, it's unclear, it's already being used as an accessory dwelling?
No, no, there is nobody living there.
But it has a, it has a, has a bathroom, it's heated, it's...
It's not heated. It has a bathroom.
It's not heated.
And it doesn't have a kitchen and it has a huge garage door.
The photographs that you've submitted that show a kitchen, kitchenette, bath, et cetera, is that in another structure?
That's in the main structure. That's the original house. There is a, a main house on the property that has all these amenities that are on the pictures that you see.
And you have a photograph, I believe, that shows the, the main structure and the structure that you want to renovate.
Correct.
If we can put that up for the neighbors to see.
So this is the main house and this is the, it's actually five car garages. And they exist, that's how the property was purchased. It's just due to the circumstances, she thought, instead of having five car garages, what are we going to do with five car garages? And if you're not a car collector or interested in that, it will be of no use to you except to collect junk. So she thought maybe this could be altered to be a residence for her sister so she can look after her. She is not able to attend today because, if I may, we had a planning public hearing on Monday and she was extremely attacked, which made her very, very sick because she said, "I wish people came and asked me what my intention was." And that's my intention, I don't intend to rent it to anybody or sell it to anybody. There is no additional congestion that will happen and this perimeter, everything here remains the same. We approached the board of health and we were requested to work with an engineer to evaluate the current system. We hired Thomas Ross and we went to the site with an excavator and he has provided me with a plan, I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to assemble it today, of the existing parameters of the existing septic. So the pleasant surprise was that the septic tank is a twelve fifty gallon septic tank with five fifty foot ladles. So what we are proposing to the health department is to just do a secondary septic tank and pump it to the main septic tank because this already exists on the property.
By the way...
But he wasn't able to do additional PERC tests or deep tests, right?
Well, we're going into the same septic tank, so there's no reason to do any more PERC tests, we were not required. We want, they wanted to find out how adequate is the system that's already existing. And that's what we found, we found a twelve fifty tank with five fifty foot ladles that already is on the property. So that's sufficient for four bedrooms as per the zoning. We don't have four bedrooms, but it is something we can utilize.
Maybe another thing we could put up there for the neighbors is the proposed floor plan.
Yes.
So they have an idea of what you're proposing to put inside. Have any of you folks out there had an opportunity to review the file and see any of the materials?
It's the second one.
But for those who haven't, this is what has been submitted, so you can see what is being proposed.
So this is an existing structure, as I mentioned, so there is nothing that will be built outside of the existing parameters. We would just alter the garage door, which actually I think might be more friendly for the neighborhood rather than having naked garage doors everywhere. And is there like a...
Yeah, I think the main thing is two, maybe it's A one zero.
This is the, the sideline, this is how it sits right now. So this is the main house, this is the, these are the existing garages and we are proposing to utilize these garages right here. Leave this one remain as a car garage for the parents, her and her friend. This is what currently exists, I'm sorry?
Where is the view from the street?
The view from the street, you have to go back to the pictures, you'll see the side of a garage here.
No, I mean, just point to where the street is.
The street is right here, as we can go. And these are the garages and this garage remains the way it is and nobody touches it, this structure remains the way it is from the exterior, the operation is on the interior and the house is right here.
And where, where is the nearest house?
There is a house right here on the drawing that I just passed around. There is a house right here and there is a farm on this side.
And where is the house on that farm? If you know.
I have a survey, you have a survey that might not be there?
Yes, I'll go get it for the site visit.
Okay, we're fine.
There you go.
So this is the person's one.
Richards.
And this is one house, this is the second house. And it is something that we do.
Okay, can we go to the, because I really want the neighbors to be able to see what you want to do inside.
Of course.
And I think that's A one point zero.
That's in the application.
Correct.
It's in the septic garage. This one, number five, is what we're proposing to do. So this is what we're doing, we're removing the garage door from here, doing an entry door and moving, relocating the big window that's here to here. This way, we're keeping everything else that's here is already here, we didn't do anything to it. The bathroom exists, we're going to just extend it a little bit to accommodate the tub and do a, create a court closet, a tiny kitchen and one bedroom for the system.
That, that bedroom where, the bedroom you just mentioned, is that where that garage door is on the side?
On here.
Yeah, so that'll be taken out?
Yes, and a sliding door will be installed, very light and will qualify as a residence as well. And this is how the exterior walls are the exact same thing. We're going to seal this from the existing garage, we're going to have a fire rated separation between the garage and now this is a residence and a home. I mean, the proposal is for a residence. So nothing happened on the exterior except just the operation of the two garage doors.
So you're looking at one bedroom, a study, dining room, living room, kitchen?
Yes, it's a small apartment. If you look at the site plan, you'll see how far back the house is set up and it is high and it is difficult for her sister to navigate that being terminally ill. So this was at floor level, I mean, you can walk in right there, so there is no complication in that regard.
We hold empathy and sympathy with Miss Dolberg's sister, I do understand that, that's noble. However, for this board or the town of Reinbeck, we can't restrict, if we had a favorable decision on this, to just her sister using this. Certainly, the town of Reinbeck can't police and see who's living in different houses, we can't do that. So the application is for an accessory dwelling.
An accessory dwelling, correct. Currently, there is an accessory dwelling in the main house. We are proposing to remove it from the main house and relocate it in the garage.
Well, wait, I, I'm not clear on that. There's one resident living in the house, one residential house?
Two, two residents are living in the house.
There's two residents?
Yeah.
Do they have separate utilities or...?
The, the accessory structure has a, the accessory apartment has a kitchenette, has a bathroom, and has a bedroom and a separate entrance.
So right now, what is living in that main house is not related to the Dolberg?
No, they're close friends. And one of the reasons why she wanted to move everything outside of the main house is that her friend has a daughter who is eleven and she did not want to subject her to the trauma of dealing with a very sick person.
So those friends are going to move out?
I'm sorry?
The friends are going to move out of the main house?
The owner, Judith Dolberg, will move out from the main house and, and live with her sister to help her. She said, "I know people think it's weird, but I come from, you know, the, the Coney Island and Brooklyn and we, we lived in one bedroom all our lives and there was never an issue."
So how, how many dwell units will be in the main house?
Just one.
All right, but there's, there's an apartment, it sounds like there's...
We'll remove it.
You're removing it.
We'll remove it.
So it'll just be a single family residence.
Correct.
The blue house will just be a single family residence.
Do you have a permit or CMO for the accessory apartment?
Yes, there was one, yes.
Is the, is the house currently considered, maybe that's a question for John, a duplex because it's all under one roof, but it's...
It's just there, there's two accessory structures can either be inside an existing structure or...
So accessory structure because, accessory structure because I think the previous owner, that his mother moving with him and she was not doing well. So they got a permit and built the accessory apartment.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, there currently are two livable units, but they are both in the blue house.
Correct.
Your proposal is that blue house will become a single family residence.
Yes.
And then this will be an accessory dwelling.
Correct.
So we'll have the same number of dwelling, dwelling units.
Yeah.
And in the, under the current existing structure, there's two bedrooms?
There is the main bedroom and then there is the accessory bedroom.
Okay.
Now, Catherine and I were looking at some photographs which were submitted, I pulled them up.
Yes.
Is that part of the apartment in the main house?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the kitchenette, the bath, sleeping area and living area, that's in the main house in the, in the blue house.
This walk of the main house.
And that's part of the record?
Correct.
Okay.
Will these have separate utilities, a separate heater?
Yes.
And the heating is going to be separate from the main house?
Yes. The distance is too far to connect them. And if we're doing it as an accessory apartment, it will have its own everything.
Thank you.
Would members of the public like to come up and voice their concerns, have questions, whatever? Come on up and again, if you could just state your name, your address, and what questions and concerns you have.
My name is Edna Lockman, I live at twenty, neighborhood Eagle Road. Before I begin, I would like to hand over a letter that's signed by fifteen people in our neighborhood who oppose this application. I'm just going to set it here, I don't see Chris.
Yeah, you can give it to Chris and make it part of the record. And she'll get his copies.
In a nutshell, we oppose this application, I'm trying to get this to write the right place here. Because there is a difference between having an accessory dwelling in a house that's invisible to the public... that's invisible to the public on a lot that is only thirty percent of the lot area required in the, in the neighborhood. It is much more visible and disturbing to the neighborhood and we think detrimental to the neighborhood to put that accessory dwelling in a two thousand square foot barn that is insulated, heated, air-conditioned, which has a studio on the second floor, which was used by the previous owners as a bedroom. And, uh, I guess right now I would like to give you... Now, I want the, um, the ad... Oh, here it is, right in front of us. Oh, here it is. I'm sorry. Now, just want to rest this one off, please. This is from a real estate site, website. I do not have all the photos here, but I do have the photos of the three bedrooms that are shown in the ad. On the, I'm sorry, on the last page, you will see a, um, bedroom with a vaulted ceiling. That is the studio in the second floor of the barn. It has a full bath and, as described in that copy. And on the first floor, there is a half bath.
Just for clarification, what you've just handed us is in the garage?
In the garage, yes.
Right there. And you earlier said that the prior owner had a bedroom. Was that a good thing or a bad thing or why did you mention that?
Because, um, it has not been mentioned during this application and there is no floor plan on the second floor that shows a full bath there. Uh, and we think is relevant to how the garage will be used.
So, may I clarify something?
Let her finish and then you can clarify it.
All right, what I'd like to do is quickly run through what we've learned about the history of building changes at fifteen Hagerd Eagle Road. In two thousand and two, a building permit was issued to remodel the house, uh, which at the time had only one bedroom. Uh, the floor plans in the town's files show that the house would have three bedrooms and two and a half baths when the remodeling was completed. We don't know if three bedrooms were pre-existing or if the number was increased and we don't know whether Board of Health was notified about the plans. The town should, or perhaps did do that. In two thousand and three, uh, the town granted a building permit in error for a garage expansion. Uh, it was an error because it was too close to the road and required variances. We alerted the town that setback requirements were not met. A stop order was issued, worked it not stopped. After the fact, variances were applied for and granted. But as a condition, the ZBA required the planting of evergreen screening before the building inspector would grant a CO. The evergreens were never planted, but apparently the CO was granted. Um, I have a copy of the two thousand and three ZBA resolution. And it says, "The existing garage is two stories high and represents a formidable structure. The board feels that appropriate landscaping is required to soften the appearance, road, emlock, or other such evergreen is required." A half bath was added in the garage in two thousand and three, or later, we don't know. According to a statement by the applicant on Monday at the planning board meeting, it flows into a dry well without an intervening septic tank. In two thousand and five, a building permit was granted to add a full bath to the second floor garage studio. And as with the first bath, we're guessing it also flows directly into the, into the dry well. Then sometime during or after the remodeling of the house in two thousand and two, an accessory dwelling was created in the house by combining two of the bedrooms with the adjoining full bath that's shown on the two thousand and two plans and adding a kitchen. There is no record of a special permit for this accessory dwelling in the town's files. If it was done before two thousand and nine, it would have required variances as well as a special permit under the nineteen eighty-nine zoning law. So we're not sure that there is now a legal accessory dwelling inside the house to relocate to the garage. And we think it's very likely the town has never reviewed the adequacy of the property to contain an accessory dwelling, nor most likely has the Board of Health. We, neighbors, were surprised to learn of its existence. Gary and I have owned our property, um, since two thousand and one and we and other nearby neighbors have never been notified above any public hearing for a variance or a special permit for an accessory dwelling. We believe that the variances sought are substantial and will be detrimental to our neighborhood. The property has only thirty percent of the required lot area, less than forty percent of the required lot width. As with everybody else who has property in Reinbeck, we've all made big investments in our properties. And we feel that, you know, they have enhanced the area and helped to maintain our district as rural countryside. For example, next door to the Delberg property is a twenty-six acre farm owned by the Greens. Um, it has a house parked on the road and land that racks around the backs of four properties to the east that protects their backyards. East of the Delberg property is a one hundred and ten-year-old stone house that's been preserved by Kathy Austin. Across the street from the Delberg property, our land constitutes the major portion, two hundred and sixty-two acres, of the multi-resource district. This, as you may know, contains much of the length of the Fallsburg Creek as well as the historic Rockland estate that's listed on state and national registers of historic places. And some of the contributing stone buildings are on our land. Soon after we bought this property in two thousand and one, and even before we built our house, we placed a conservation easement on the land. The mayor's fathers of Boston, who sold the property to us, had been considering several, what they call best use plans for the land. One of them was a fifty-unit conservation subdivision. Because of our easement, that development is never going to happen. We are not wealthy, but we're comfortable enough to forebode the profit opportunity of subdivision and development on our land. This has helped to keep our neighborhood rural, has enhanced the value of dozens of properties that surround our parcel, and keeps a long stretch of wooded land along Hagerd Eagle Road forever wild. All of us have made our investments as an act of faith that our properties will not be devalued, devalued by other neighbors who don't play by the rules. And I'm not saying that this applicant is one of those. Uh, but we have faith that the town is going to enforce zoning regulations and then boards will work to maintain the integrity of our rural district, including its density requirements, by being conservative in granting variances and permits. We feel the previous owners of fifteen Hagerd, the Hill Road, maybe didn't always play by the rules. And it is likely that they may not have disclosed to Judy Delberg and Jennifer Decuna that their existing accessory dwelling might not be legal and that the septic system on, uh, system on the property might not have been upgraded to accommodate changes that have been made since two thousand and two. If that's the case, they may have legal recourse. But we, we neighbors should not be penalized by having a bad situation made worse through the installation of a dwelling unit in the garage. This two thousand square foot, two-story structure located only thirty-nine feet from the road is not small. As the ZBA said in two thousand and three, it is a formidable structure. As a dwelling, it will end up looking like and being used as a two-story house with attached three-car garage. Sitting in front of a larger house, both very close to neighboring properties, on a lot only thirty percent of the required area. This would intensify use of the structure and would be an obvious and drastic departure from the required density in the district. And we're mostly concerned that it's gonna be obvious. It would be unfair to neighbors who have made large investments in their properties to the benefit of all and who have played by the rules. We believe the alleged difficulty is self-created. Despite the possibility that Judy Delberg and Jennifer Decuna may have been misled by the previous owner or the Realtor regarding how the property can legally be used, they purchased what was listed as a two-bedroom house. There was no guarantee that a separate dwelling could legally be created in the garage or that the infrastructure could accommodate it. I also would like to say just a few words about this stated desire to protect Jennifer Decuna's daughter from association with a person who is ill. Presumably, Judy and Jennifer have purchased a property together and are friends and their families are known to each other. Stage four cancer is extremely sad and serious. It can often be controlled for long periods of time. Um, at the Monday night planning board hearing, Chris Green, who I believe is here tonight, um, and is Judy Delberg's immediate neighbor, described how his wife Susan, who had stage four cancer, has enjoyed many years with her family despite her illness. Certainly, she was not closeted away from their young children. Instead, all have been a loving comfort to each other. The same was true for my brother, who died relatively young from leukemia and spent years enjoying his children and grandchildren while fighting his illness. And at the end, they were there to comfort him. And none of these young people suffered damage from the experience of facing the realities of life and death.
Ma'am, as to that issue, it'll be Brown and Smith and Jones and McAluso who will be living in these rooms. We're not here to decide on someone's niece or nephew or whose mother doesn't allow their child. I respect what you're saying, but we're not gonna consider, or at least I'm not, as I said earlier, I, I, this is not being done for a particular aunt or anything else.
Thank you. I mention it because it's given in the application as the rationale for the need.
And that's, it's important that you respond to that.
You also look at the effect on the environment and neighboring properties. Um, we've been told that four people are going to live on the property. That is Judy Delberg, Jennifer Decuna, who is Decuna's daughter, and Judy's sister who is ill. The applicant has said that if variances and special permit are granted, only two bedrooms will exist, one in the house and one in this apartment in the garage. We are told that one of the two bedrooms in the house will be converted into a play area. I believe that this is the currently existing accessory apartment. I have some floor plans from the remodeling in two thousand and two, which I'll show you later. And I think we can see where that accessory dwelling is and how large it is.
Could I ask something? Were you, um, get the impression that there were only gonna be two bedrooms total?
Uh, that's what we were told at the planning board meeting. Yeah, we were told that, um, one of the two bedrooms in the house is gonna be converted to this play area for Ms. Decuna's daughter. And she's not gonna sleep there. Instead, she's going to sleep with her mother in the remaining bedroom. And then in the garage, Judy Delberg said she will sleep with her sister who is ill in the small room that is labeled a bedroom, rather than in the identical adjoining room that's labeled a study or in the upstairs studio that has a full bath. We think this isn't really believable and seems to be an attempt to keep the Board of Health out of the picture. Failure of their septic system obviously would have a negative environmental impact and it could, and it could threaten neighboring wells. I have just a couple more comments. I'm sorry to take so long.
No, that's okay. You want to hear it?
Okay. Um, variances have long-term consequences. In this case, if variances are granted to use this garage as a dwelling, we are certain that at some point, the stairway to the studio with the full bath on the second floor of the garage will be connected to the apartment below simply by cutting through the wall of what is shown on the floor plans as a closet. And it could well be that this won't happen when the current owners have this property. But it would be obvious, the potential to do this would be obvious to any future owner. And if and when it happens, it's likely to happen quickly with little-known noise and no building permit, joining the other against the rules of actions that have taken place on, on this property. If combined with two or three bedrooms in the house, the property could realistically contain a total of five or six bedrooms, far beyond what the lot should contain or what a septic system can likely accommodate. Finally, we believe that there are ways to achieve the desired benefit by other means. Gary's gonna give everybody, except John Lyons, he's waiting to bring out copies. A copy, this is the, uh, plans that were submitted for a building permit to remodel the house in two thousand and two.
Is this when the Hobson's had it?
Yes. And so if you look at the first floor, you will see here two bedrooms, uh, one below the other, that take up the length of the house. We believe that this, uh, non-bearing wall that's marked there was removed and this entire area then was converted to an accessory apartment. And if you look at the photos that were on the Zillow real estate ad, you get a perspective of, uh, you know, a half wall that, with a bed behind it and a living area and this fireplace.
Is that part of the record?
No.
Okay, that, that should be made part of the record. We should have that. I mean, I, is there something from, well, we probably have to go back to the archives for two thousand and two to see.
Well, I got these from Tom's files, so they're there.
They're there, all right. Grab one and throw it in.
Do you have electronic copies of these?
I do not, nor did the town.
I do have.
Okay.
You can find yourself on realdog.com, go in the household and just to put the fifteen, fifteen hundred, you will find everything there.
But you don't have electronic copies of these floor plans?
No, the floor plans, no, but the whole, how the house is and the second floor bedroom in the garage.
I would like to continue. We believe it's possible that an accessory dwelling is not actually needed even in the house. And instead, the area that is now an accessory dwelling could be converted into a single large bedroom for Judy Delberg and her sister. As can be seen, it occupies the length of the house, is quite spacious. As can be seen, it occupies the length of the house, is quite spacious, and can accommodate both Judy Delberg and her sister in separate beds. If you go to the upstairs floor plan, you'll see that there is a five-hundred-and-sixty square foot area that includes a full bath and walk-in closet, plenty of room for two separate bedrooms for Jennifer Decuna and her daughter. That amounts to a total of three bedrooms, which the town approved in 2002. If on the other hand, an accessory dwelling is desired, the current apartment could be retained as is and still provide plenty of room for two beds in that room. Also, it's certainly possible to make that accessory dwelling quite private. You know, so it does not have to be open to the rest of the house. Also, there was stated a desire for a play area for Jennifer Decuna's daughter, and it occurred to us that this could be accommodated in the studio with the full bath that is upstairs in the garage. We've been told she's eleven years old. This separate area for homework, listening to music, spending time with friends, we think would be the envy of any pre-teen or teenager. If an accessory apartment in the house is desired and is found to have been created illegally, then legally Judy Delberg should apply for the variances and special permit that would be required to retain the apartment in the house, and the septic system should be approved by the Board of Health for its use. If this is done, I doubt that any neighbors will object, since the increasing density will at least be invisible. Making use of three bedrooms in the house or keeping the accessory apartment there are two alternative solutions that would meet the needs of the owners at 15 Hagerty Hill Road without additional negative impact on the neighborhood. We ask you to deny the current application and instruct Judy and Jennifer to choose one of these two reasonable alternatives, rather than to so obviously violate the considered requirements of our district by creating another essentially house with a three-car attached garage thirty-nine feet from the road. Thanks very much.
Thank you. I have a question.
Yes.
Going back to the very beginning of your presentation in 2003, you mentioned there was an addition to the garage?
Yes.
Could you, I don't have any information, whatever you have.
The two-story park of the garage existed.
The two-story park?
Yes, the owners wished to extend it toward the street. They wanted to add three-car bays.
And that's that three-bay?
You got it.
One-story, that was added in 2003?
Right.
And to the best of your knowledge, the larger garage was there when you bought it?
I believe it was.
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three.
Oh, was that built in ninety-three?
Yes.
Oh, okay, very good. All right, so the first building was built in ninety-three, then they applied and were allowed to put the 2003 addition requiring hemlock trees, which were never put in, on the side between the road and that structure.
And Richard, you should have in your pack, you just got a copy of the resolution.
Yeah, I saw that.
That's what that is.
And by the way, I really don't think evergreen trees would work. There's not a large enough space between the road and the garage. I think it would look terribly artificial. You know, I don't think you can do it in that amount of space.
Could I ask that, what you read from, do you supply a copy?
Yes, I do have copies for you.
Could you supply an electronic copy?
Yes, here are her copies.
I just want to make sure there's a portion of the record will be easier for Chris to keep track of the arguments.
Before we continue on, it would be very helpful if either the applicant or perhaps yourself knew the square footage of the house.
It's two-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-six square feet with five-hundred-and-sixty square feet on the second floor.
How many square feet?
Two-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-six, five-hundred-and-sixty on the second floor. So it's a sizable house.
Yes.
Okay. I'm Gary Lockman, same address as the previous speaker. I want to make three points this evening. First, I want to reemphasize the drastic nature of the variances required to construct this accessory dwelling. Thirty percent of the required acreage, forty percent, less than forty percent of the frontage. This is not in the category of a ten-foot setback variance. This is huge. There has to be a limit somewhere relative to the parameters of the zoning law, and I believe that whatever this limit is, this one's over it. Plus, as Edna pointed out, the property has already received significant concessions from the town in the form of front line setback and location variances for the attached garage. The exceptions currently being sought are on top of the exceptions that have been granted in the past. There are a lot of exceptions for one property, and this doesn't even include the exceptions that should have been sought by the previous owners at work. Second, at the planning board meeting this past Monday, no one except the applicant was in favor of this proposal. Fifteen people, virtually all of the residents of the neighborhood, signed a letter in opposition to it, and many spoke against it during the public comment session. If variances were decided by majority vote, this application would have been overwhelmingly rejected. But it won't be decided as it would be in pure democracy. Perhaps a good thing, since otherwise we might not ever get anything done. It will be decided by a board, you. The reason for that, hopefully a good one, is that you'll bring to the table something that democracies often don't: wisdom, perspective, and the ability to trade off positive and negative consequences and to balance short-range and long-range impact. Yours is a binary decision to make, approve or disapprove. But you have to make that decision in a world of gray. There will be arguments on both sides. As you have heard and will hear, your decision will ultimately hinge on how you balance the short-term interests of two individuals, sisters, one of whom is very ill, against the long-term interests of other residents. Short-term accommodation to an illness versus long-term damage to the rural character of the neighborhood. We know how this would be decided if done by majority vote. If you approve it, you are essentially saying that the short-term interests of two individuals trump the long-term interests of many individuals. For you to be comfortable with that decision yourself, you have to believe that your judgment is better than that of the majority, or in this case, a unanimity. And you would need to take into account that the long-term damage to the character of the neighborhood is something that none of you will experience yourselves. The burden will fall on us. In thinking about this, I would suggest that you start by taking out the hardship factor, the rationale that's been offered by the applicant for doing this in the first place. If there were no six sisters, how would you decide this? Given the extreme nature of the variances sought, self-creation and the presence of a viable alternative, I would certainly hope that you would reject it. If you would reject it under normal circumstances, but approve it under these circumstances, you are clearly giving a great deal of weight to a problem that one way or another will resolve itself over the course of a few quarters or perhaps even a few months. But the variances will last forever. You would be taking a short-term view of this application than those who oppose it. If so, that deserves serious consideration. Boards like yours are supposed to be the adults in the room, the ones taking the long view. So we're depending on you not to be swayed by sympathy for a situation that will at some point end. You're making a decision that will stand indefinitely, and as you'll hear, it is what may happen in the future, perhaps with different owners, that is at the heart of our opposition. Third, and finally, the planning board has held over the public comment period at least until the December meeting. This was part in due to the degree of opposition to the application, but also because of concerns over the septic system. I believe it's incumbent on the ZMA, on the CBA to do the same and for the same reasons. We can find no record of Board of Health involvement with this property ever, despite significant changes to the property. We've spoken with both the Reinbeck Building Department and the Department of Health. To our knowledge, the septic system has never been reviewed by a competent professional since the house was built in nineteen-twenty-eight. We don't really know what's there currently. Now, this situation may have changed because of the document that was passed out. Obviously, none of us have had a chance to examine that. The applicant has made an attempt to kick the can a little further down the road by implausibly maintaining that after completion of the project, there will be no increase in the number of bedrooms from the two that is shown on the property card, one in the accessory dwelling and one in the house. No increase in bedroom count would forestall BOH review. That's the reason for the two. They don't want the septic tank looked at or the septic system looked at. Believing this two-bedroom as a steady-state arrangement requires, among other things, believing that an eleven-year-old girl will be content to sleep in the same room with her mother once she becomes a teenager, arrests my case. I don't blame Judy for not understanding the implications of the fiction she's maintaining, but her architect, who ought to know that adults screw around with septic regulations, appears to be endorsing this. It wasn't successful. The Board of Health is now on the case, is requiring a professional evaluation, which is obviously underway. Why should the town be concerned about the outcome of this? Septic systems are the purview of BOH. The town isn't involved. The reason is that if this application is approved, the owners of the property, current and future, will have license to greatly increase density. A build-out analysis is typically not done as part of septic system design. The design starts with a certain number of bedrooms and works from there. If the starting point is unreasonable, the system may be undersized, and the overworked Board of Health, which normally doesn't even do site visits, may approve the plan. If the property in fact becomes built out, there's a problem. Somebody needs to be outside the circle to provide a sanity check. That's the town. There's nobody else to do it. How many bedrooms could we be talking about? This has already been pretty well been covered. Tear this out, and you can annex the upstairs loft, move a few pieces of furniture, and this becomes a bedroom, so you get three in the accessory dwelling. In the house, they had three. It would be very easy to restore three. And if you turn the office in a bedroom, in a pinch, you could turn it into four. So we could be talking five, we could be talking six, we could be talking seven bedrooms. If the septic system is designed for two bedrooms, the expansion field essentially doubles that to four. It won't handle six. And as Edna pointed out, this could all be done under the radar. No business, no building permits would be required, and no BOH involvement would be undertaken unless the owner at his initiative called the BOH and said, hey, we're adding a bunch of bedrooms. Would we have to do anything? So the accessory dwelling has now become a three-bedroom house with two full baths. And once this application is granted, there will be very little the town can do to stop this. In closing, we don't like what will look like a second house sitting on a tiny lot and very close to the road. It's way out of place and totally at odds with the quite spacious appearance of the area. But our biggest concern is the build-out, perhaps under future owners, over which the town will have little control and could greatly increase density and potentially introduce renters, including short-term renters, if it's Airbnb, as the real estate ad suggests, to a neighborhood that is now exclusively owner-occupied. So please don't look at this application exclusively in terms of what it does for two sisters over a limited period. Look at what it may do to the neighborhood over an indefinite period. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, we've got the Joel and your printed copies.
All right, I'm going to take, I assume there's some more neighbors who would like to speak? Okay. I'll let the applicant's representative speak just for a moment to address some of the items that were brought up here, and then we'll get on to round two from the neighbors.
We had a panel of the hearing, and it turned to...
Well, I just want to address whatever arguments they made.
As it stands right here, right here, the entrance to the loft is separate from this completely. The loft is heated because the previous owner was an art collector. I have a message from him here, from Glenn Hobson, saying that when we did major renovation in 2002, my mother-in-law was elderly and feeble, necessitating selling our old house up the road. We obtained a building permit with understanding that there would be an apartment for her in the house with us. The building inspector made final inspection, and hence we were assessed as a two-family dwelling since 2003. Assessment records will verify this, which is probably what the bank relied on when we bought the property. So here is this woman who came to buy this place. It's a substandard lot. That's not her doing. It has five garages. That's also not her doing. We're not proposing to add any other buildings. We're proposing to utilize an existing structure in a different way. The planning board chair and representative came to the place and met with Judith and myself and visited the different locations and so forth themselves, what's going on. There is no secret, and I can't judge what other people will do in the future and prosecute them accordingly. I mean, this is her intent. This is what she wants to do. Furthermore, she said that she has the same genetic mutation, and chances are she will be the same predicament like her sister in not so long a time. She's a registered nurse, and she knows what she's talking about. The house sits very far away from the driveway. If you look at the sightline, you will see that. And it would be a hardship to take a person who is ill to bring them all that way there when there's a perfectly good place for them to be closer to the driveway. And furthermore, this addition that is here is a two-car garage. There is no three-car garage anywhere. I'm not quite sure where that came from. But anyway, she also said, and I will repeat that for her, she said if the issue is because this might look like it could become a bedroom, she said, I'll remove the wall. I lived with my sister in the one bedroom for all our lives growing up. We're only twenty-two months apart.
Would it be possible for the property owner to attend the next meeting? Because I for one have questions that...
Yes.
Why could not the main house accommodate this situation?
Because of the distance. I was trying to explain to you the distance.
But the distance between this garage and the house, I mean...
It's trying to make one little...
It doesn't, I'm not seeing that argument. They're not that far apart. By the way, just, and we haven't done it yet, but where I'm inclined to go
Yes.
is do what Richard suggested. I would like to have some more information on this application. I'm not prepared to close the public hearing tonight because there's been way too much additional information. I appreciate it. That's why we're here, is to get this information. And I just don't think this application lends itself to be closed this evening, so remind me, and I'll make that application down the road, but...
This is where we are proposing to have...
I understand, but what's the distance between that and the main house?
This is the distance to the main house that is high up with many steps. And it would be very hard for a person that is very sick to navigate all this to get into a main house when there is a structure that's already there that we cannot add to.
A handicap ramp would cost so much less.
I'm sorry?
Then it would be so much, would cost so much less to just put in a handicap ramp.
Well, the thing is, it's already there. It's not like we're building anything.
No, I understand.
You're building a lot inside.
The hardship you're...
You're building a lot inside.
We're just building a wall inside and a bathroom. That's all we are building. We are not altering the appearance from the outside. Nothing changes from the outside, and this remains
I understand that.
as a two-car garage. We're not doing anything like that. And even Michael... And even Michael Trumbull said, if push comes to shove and they want a row of trees here, we can definitely accommodate them. And there is no change in the character or the personality of the building, because there is no change.
But there's a significant change potentially in the use of the whole property in aggregate. And I think, I was a little surprised that there was no mention of this heated space with a full bathroom upstairs in the garage.
Then already was there.
No, I know, but it's something for us to know.
Yes.
In terms of the whole property.
Well, I was hoping that maybe you would decide to stop by, and we will show you...
No, no, we need to know it now.
We need to have all of that information as part of this whole application.
Well, I thought it was part of the records, because this was applied for, and I showed you a C.O.
I, for one, did not know about it until...
I didn't know about it.
I did not know as well.
It wasn't mentioned, and I asked if the garage was heated, and it's not... The upstairs, it is.
The upstairs part was climate-controlled because he kept artwork.
It's a livable space. The upstairs of the garage, to me, is a livable space. It has a full bathroom.
Right, but it has no kitchen?
I can live in a building with no kitchen. I've done that many times.
What constitutes a dwelling that has no kitchens and a bathroom?
No, I mean, I'm not a cook, I can live in many buildings with no kitchen.
Yes, but I mean, it is not supposed to be in a pod.
It's an important piece of information that we didn't have. I think it makes a difference in the whole property.
I understand. It's just it not have any impact on what we're doing.
There's a main house, which is this house.
Yes.
When this other structure is converted, as the neighbors pointed out, there will be, in my opinion, another house in front of this house. Our code says you cannot put an accessory structure in front of your house. And there's a reason why the drafters of that zoning code put it in there. They don't want structures in front of houses in order to maintain the integrity of reinbeck. This is a very large structure, and it will be a house. It will be an occupied dwelling unit in front of a house.
Right, and that's why we need a variance.
Is this, again, is this for economic reasons? Does she wanna rent out? I'm not saying I'd be in favor or against it, but what are the facts? Does she wanna live in that garage so that she can rent out her house? Is it an economic hardship?
No, her friend and her daughter stays in the main house, and she just moved herself out of the main house to have her sister and to have a space for herself in the future...
But it's a 3,000-square-foot house. I don't know what the back looks like, there has to be a way of accessing, getting into this house by a handicap person, which is, again, for a finite amount of time, as indicated by the neighbors and as indicated by me before the neighbors. This is not about a disabled person, because the variance lives on. The variances are to the property, they're really not to the people. They're to the property. The property continues on, they all will be here someday, but these variances will be.
That's quite understandable.
Can I ask one more question?
Just one more, because I'll forget the question I'm about to ask.
In this document that you gave us today...
Yes.
From, I think the engineer's name was Ross?
Yes.
That was just a description of what's there, correct?
No, it is a measured drawing, because we had an excavator come and uncover the septic. I have the photos on my phone.
Oh, you had an excavator come and uncover the septic. So, did the excavator also do deep tests and perp tests with Mr. Ross?
No, we were not required. Dave Pearson asked for to uncover what's existing.
Okay.
And that's what we did. And the engineers creating the drawing and the report to send it to Dave Pearson, stating that this is, these are his findings.
That these are the, that this is the existing...
This is the existing.
Okay, the reason I'm asking...
Yes.
Is because then is Dave Pearson going to certify the septic for a certain number of bedrooms?
I don't know what he will do, he will just determine the adequacy of it.
Okay. I just went through this recently with the property, so, and in that situation, for us to determine the adequacy, we had to just say what was there, which is what you have now from Mr. Ross, and do deep tests and perp tests, because there's a relationship between the structure and the soil as towards Alcor, I think.
But if the new, if the additional structure here is gonna go to the same septic tank, then I'm not increasing any amount of laterals or anything, it's just a tank that will hold the effluent from this structure and then take it to the main house, to the main septic system. There is no reason to increase absorption or do anything, because we're not creating a new septic system.
So, in the... Did Mr. Ross provide you a report along with this?
He's supposed to be working on that, yes.
Okay, so we'd like...
We definitely wanna copy that report.
We definitely wanna copy the report, because right now, from looking at this drawing, I can't tell whether the current, in this structure here, there's a full bath upstairs and a half bath downstairs already?
Yes.
I can't tell from looking at this where the discharge from that goes.
Okay.
So, that's one question I have. Where does it currently go?
Okay.
And then I'd like to see the full report from Mr. Ross.
As soon as I have it, I will send it electronically to Chris.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Chris, I have a quick question of you. From what I hear, and maybe mishearing, the argument is that there may be two potential violations here. One relating to the main house and one relating to this garage, with regard to having an apartment in the main house and then having this loft in the garage, if I'm hearing that correctly. Have we done any investigation as the Z.E.O., investigated as to whether, you know, the appropriate approvals were obtained, and we have them?
No, I can check to know.
Yeah, we should definitely check on that, just to see if, what if any information we have on those two items, and whether there are any violations. Just to let the audience know, if there are outstanding violations, we cannot consider
As far as I know, there are no current violations.
There's no, but again, if we don't know of something...
Right.
You should make clear that that refers to an official violation, that means a notice of violation issued by the zoning personnel officer.
But I think, John, I may be disagreeing, but I think it warrants some further investigation to see whether...
We can certainly ask Michelle.
I'd just like to know that, for my own satisfaction, that the, what has been done there is in compliance. All right. Why don't we go back to the neighbors again? Who would next like to come up and, come on up? Again, please state your name, your address, and your...
I was the one that he talked about on Monday. I said I was the one that took a lot of time on Monday regarding this, and I objected that this application should have been here, because there are so many things.
Okay, but just state your name, your address, and generally what your concerns and questions are.
Dr. Okoko, 19 Haggerty Hill Road. I would like to provide this to you as an evidence from the real estate advertising. Maybe it is not pertinent to you, but I would like you to see.
Well, you can certainly supply it to Chris to make it part of the record, and then Chris can get his copies.
Basically, here is the picture of the upstairs garage, with a bed, this, and how they, this is a two-family home and so on. Of course, I'm against this. I agree with Dr. Lackman's interpretation. I have here a couple points that I would like to ask you or the town. When they did apply for the garage, the additional of the garage, and also a carport, so the application was for 24 by 24, two-car garage, plus on the east side, they say they want to put 12 by 24 carport. And that is attached basically to the two-story garage that was renovated for a small one, for where the structure, as Mr. Lackman said, almost 2,000 square feet. When they apply, when they received the variance grant, in the variance grant, they said that there was a condition, that the condition was not met, but they didn't receive a C, a certificate of occupancy. In the variance granted, they always say 24 by 24. They don't mention the carport garage, 24 by 12. I hope you understand, if not, I'll show you.
Well, I actually, I have the resolution in front of me, 2003.
Yeah.
And I'm actually on it. Shows you how long I've been on this board. I don't remember it, but I understand what you're saying, the conditions have not been met, and we know that, but that's...
Also, the variant, basically, when they granted the variance, they didn't mention the carport, the bench, correct?
But it's not in here, I don't know that it's, you're saying it...
I can show you something, so I will be quick if I can show you what my...
You know what, if I test it this way, this allowed 24 by 24.
Yeah.
Are you suggesting that the building they built, the garage, is bigger than that?
Correct, because there is also a 24 by 12 on the east side called Carport.
It's not enclosed, it's open?
It's all, it's all one structure.
It's not shown in any of the photographs that we have.
It's all one structure, yeah. I can show you the...
All right, sir, is the carport enclosed or open?
Enclosed.
So, it's not really a carport. It sounds like they built the garage bigger than what they were allowing.
Correct.
So, you're saying this, the garage, and I'm gonna point to this portion of the photograph, that's bigger than what is set forth in the resolution? Is that where you're coming from?
If I can show you what my work is, maybe you can see better. Thank you.
Sure. Or show us, why don't you come up here, so we can all see what you're...
When they did the application, they were seeking...
Well, all I'm concerned about is, the resolution says one thing, if they build it in conformity with the resolution.
I don't know.
You said they did not.
They're talking about there only 24 by 24 addition, no mention to the carport. The carport is this.
But, all I'm getting at, this appears, if you look at this photograph that we've been provided by the applicant, that in fact a, I presume it's 24 by 24 addition was put on, there's no carport here.
You see, this is what they ask, 24 by 24, plus the proposed addition, the carport, 24 by 12. So, we have 24 here, and we have 24 by 12 here, attached to the existing two-story garage.
Well, it's not shown.
Or is that the resolution? No, the resolution is this.
Did they ever build the carport?
I don't know.
Well, then it's irrelevant, if they didn't build it, they didn't build it. While we're, you're saying that they built in violation of the prior resolution. What proof do you have of that?
Say again, repeat.
Okay, the resolution says they're allowed to build a 24 by 24 addition to the existing garage. It appears that that is what was done from the photograph that has been supplied to us. What information do you have is different?
Yeah, this is it. They asked for the application...
It doesn't matter what they asked for, they were given the ability to do what's set forth in the resolution. Did they do something in violation of that?
I would like you to check that.
Well, it's up to you to give us that information. I know they have not put up...
I don't see, I don't...
They have not put up the hemlock, I know that, they have not put up the screen, we know that, so that...
Sir, it appears from my looking hat that it was built is in conformity, it was 24 by 24. However, we welcome corrections or any information you have that in fact...
But I got this information from public record that...
Yeah, well, then submit it to us, yeah. Thank you.
It sounds to me that they applied for more than they were granted. They applied for a carport in addition to the 24 by 24 garage.
If that is the case, I didn't go there and take the measurements for myself, so I didn't do this, that's all.
But if they never, and they weren't granted everything they applied for, they were granted just the garage?
With a condition, that it wasn't met. They granted the variance with a condition that it wasn't met. Despite that, they received a certificate of occupancy by the same office that is no longer with us.
Well, that's okay.
That's all. Also, one thing about this thing that I opposed is, they wanna put the apartment that is in the main house in the garage. The apartment, I would like to know how many square feet it is, and according to the law, on 125-68, on the point number four, they say that on, it should not exceed 900,000 square feet. In reality, we will have 793 square feet for the downstairs of the garage that they want to convert, plus 393 on the upstairs studio that wasn't shown in this application. Total per footage will be 1,187. Also on the law, we said on number five, seven, 11, and 12 points. If we create a true conversion of an accessory structure legally existing on the premise on or before the effective date of this chapter, the principal dwelling and accessory dwelling unit are at the time of conversion on a single lot with a lot area and lot width of no less than minimum specified for the zoning dispute act 4. There is RC 5, 5 acres, while they have actually 1.5. You should know, because you have...
We know, it's a substandard.
One thing that it triggered me to go and look at this is, when I came here Monday, Mr. Trumbull, when I asked if he has been on the premise, in the location, he said yes, and I don't see any problem to do this. Well, it looks like there are so many problems in this that I cannot stand, because somebody already said with this, I'm, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other neighbors who would like to be heard?
Hi, my name is Michelle Cornhauser, I live at 12 Haggerty Hill Road. I have a letter that I wanna submit from myself and my husband.
Okay. You can just give that to Chris, he'll make copies for us.
I made copies, I don't know how he'd make so. My husband is unable to be here because he's at home taking care of our seven-month-old son. We moved to Haggerty Hill and purchased our house, it's the first house that we've ever bought, in December of 2018. And one of the reasons why we really liked the house was because of the area that it was in. It's beautiful, it's rural, but still has a little bit of a neighborhood feel. We were really excited to live around other homeowners and get to know them. The previous owner of our home gave us a long list of other neighbors that they were friends with, and we were really excited to be in a place where we could plant some roots and know our neighbors and be in a community of people who cared about their area. We are very concerned about the proposed changes to this lot because of, mostly because of what we feel that will bring in the future, which is turning this... turning this garage into a prime place for rentals, either Airbnb rentals or possibly longer term, and make it into a situation where we don't know who is living across the street from us from month to month and year to year or week to week. It makes us feel unsafe to think about the fact that we don't know who's going to be essentially across the street from us. And although the stoward and the architect have stated many times that that is not what their intention is, it seems very likely to me that it's a real possibility that that's what this could turn into. As other people have stated, we are very concerned about that. We feel that it's pretty unrealistic to think that there's only going to be one bedroom in that structure and one bedroom in the big house in the back. It just doesn't seem realistic, and even if that's what these current owners do, it seems even more unrealistic to think that that's what future owners are going to do. So yeah, it's, the space has already been advertised on Zillow, as you've seen, as being a prime Airbnb space. And it's really not what we thought we were going to be living across the street from when we purchased our home. It seems that appropriate alternatives already exist, which other people have stated, and we agree that it seems like those should be considered instead of doing these changes, which are detrimental to our neighborhood and to our community. We feel also that Ms. Dolberg and her friend bought this house in April, and only a few months later are turning around and wanting to make these massive changes to the nature of the property. And it's not really fair to the neighborhood to say in such a short amount of time, well, this doesn't fit our needs and we need to make all these changes. It just doesn't seem fair to the neighborhood when they could have real impact on us down the road. And that's, I have a second. Thank you.
Quick question?
Yeah.
I'm just looking at what I think is your house. It looks like you have a direct view across the street to the subject property.
Yeah, we do. So it's, yeah, so we have, I mean, we're essentially directly across the street. So, you know, we, I don't think that a few hedges in front of us are going to fix this situation, considering the large amount of additional traffic that could be brought in by however many people are living there. It is gonna have a big impact on our experience living in our house, and it just seems like it's way outside of what is done for the neighborhood and shouldn't be allowed to proceed.
So could you just quickly point out, is your house just directly across
Our house.
To the left a little bit.
It's across to the left.
This is your house, and this is your garage?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. So, you know, we are, yeah, essentially right across the street.
But just to be clear, your concern is not really about the aesthetics of it because the building won't change. It's about the use of it?
Yeah, and having, you know, a three-bedroom house right there could increase in the noise. There could be a lot of additional noise, a lot of additional traffic. And so that could change the aesthetic, and especially if there's renters in there who don't necessarily have the same care for their neighborhood that homeowners do. You know, maybe they would and maybe they wouldn't, but it just seems like this is really opening the door to pile a lot of people into that property, and seems very against what the nature of the neighborhood is supposed to be.
Thank you.
So, good evening. My name is Chris Green, and as Ms. Lockman said, my family and I own this property, which, and we also own this strip of property. So our property comes from here to here, way back here, all the way around over to here and behind these houses. And we bought it 10 years ago when we first moved to Ryanbeck. This is what the house looked like when we bought the property. It doesn't look like that anymore. We have a little horse farm. We fixed it up. We have horses and donkeys and dogs and cats. My, before I start, I just want to clarify a few things that seem to be unclear. The first thing is, I have spoken with Judy Dolberg and spoken with Jennifer, excuse me, is it Jenna?
Yes.
Yeah, Jennifer DeCoona, who bought this property from Glenn and Diane. And they're lovely people. They're nice people. And I don't believe it was fair to say they were attacked on Monday at the town planning board hearing. Certainly wasn't my intent to attack them. Secondly, and I don't know if you know this, they own the property as tenants in common. So, I mean, I think it's sort of been a burden to Judy's property because they own it as tenants in common. So Judy has the sister that is ill, and Jennifer has the daughter. And presently, they both live in the big house that Glenn and Diane lived in when we first moved there. Let's see, is there anything else I wanted to clarify? Oh, yeah. This issue of difficulty of the sister accessing the main house is not, I don't believe, expressed as a rationale for the application as it was filed. I think the sole rationale for the application as it was filed was the concern about the harm to the daughter of Jennifer from being exposed to and living with Judy's sister in close quarters because Judy's sister has stage IV cancer. And as Edna sort of hinted, that's an issue that I would like to talk about a little bit, notwithstanding your comments, Mr., excuse me, Whit McAluso, that the
I will be more patient. All right.
You know, is, runs with the property. I understand that.
I'm sorry. I have to say, I'm fairly uncomfortable with this. I really am. I mean, the personal and medical situations of residents of properties, just, I mean, if we're not talking about a hospice or a hospital, I don't understand why they're relevant. We really are talking about the property and the permanence of variance is granted. And an individual situation and our or your perception of it really just makes me feel very uncomfortable to hear about.
I can appreciate that. I can. But is it not the case that when you apply for a variance, you have to give some reason for why you're applying for it?
Absolutely.
So that's the reason they gave it, right? That's my understanding, and that's why I think it bears focusing on.
Okay. I'm certainly not
Notwithstanding your lack of comfort
I'm not gonna stop you from conversing about this.
Okay.
I think it's very uncomfortable for someone. Let me just suggest this. I have no quarrel with you touching on it, and I think it's already been touched on ad nauseam. And it was legitimately a reason they gave. So I think it is, because it's been brought up, it's legitimate to comment on, but it's been commented on quite a bit. So I have no quarrel with you if you just briefly get into that, but we just don't want to, it's getting to be 9:30, and I don't want to cut anybody off. We also, by the way, have two other folks on, and I apologize for those two other folks. Sorry about that.
I'm hungry.
Oh, you're hungry. All right. But I don't want to cut everybody off, so
No, I'll certainly try to be very Just on that one issue. Well, let me just talk about one other issue before I get to that issue, and that is, we spent a lot of time fixing up our farm, and we finally were focusing on fixing up the house. So two years ago, we expanded our house. We didn't expand the number of bedrooms. It still had three bedrooms, but we expanded the floor plan. It originally had 1,100 square feet, and now it has 2,400. And we added a full bath upstairs. It had a full bath downstairs. So in that process, Mr. Pearson of the Board of Health required us to put in a completely new septic system because the septic system there was pre-coded. And we also had to identify another area, which I forget what it's called, but it's another area where you can put additional leach fields in stage expansion.
Expansion field.
Expansion field, yeah. So we had to identify and do testing of an expansion field in addition to the leach fields that we had to put in, and that covered quite an area on our property. I just mentioned that because I don't think there's area on this one and a half acre property for an expansion field should one be required, but that's a Board of Health
That's exactly what I was about to say. It's a Board of Health consideration.
Yeah, that is their issue. The issue I wanted to focus on was the fact that my wife and I and our two youngest daughters lived in this 1,100 square foot house when we bought the property for eight years before we enlarged it, and my daughters at the time were 13 and 10 when we moved in. My wife had a breast cancer diagnosis three years before we moved in, so they lived with my wife in very close quarters for eight years as her cancer progressed, and it's now stage IV. And they both went to school here at Ryanbeck. My older of the two daughters is now 23. She went to Skidmore, got a college degree. They're both working, happy, successful, out in the community. It didn't harm them to live in close quarters with an older person who had, who had cancer. In very close quarters. In fact, it made them stronger, I think, and it taught them empathy, which is a very important quality, I think, in all people. So I question whether, without passing judgment, whether it is correct to assume that just because an 11-year-old is living in proximity to an older person with a health issue, that it's necessarily going to be detrimental to that young person. I think in fact it could be eye-opening and help that non-person. It certainly helped my daughters grow up and be better and stronger people. So I question that with all respect as a rationale for the application. And I question more vigorously, as everyone else has, and I won't belabor it, the future use of a one and a half acre property with effectively two, three-bedroom houses on it in this, in this community. So with that, unless you have any questions for me, I'm finished.
Thank you.
My name is Kevin Lian. 21 Hagerty Hill Road. Poppy Street Houses Down. I think most of what I was thinking, our neighbors have pretty much covered everything, so I'll just be clear. And I'll just reiterate what I said at the planning board. It's probably, I'm not gonna pass judgment on the people that are there. It's really not about that. Like someone said, the variances they live on, who's living here. What we're seeing here is another three-bedroom house, potential, potential rental if these people move out. My, my house, we had about 800 square feet of living space, maybe a little bit more than that. I have two bedrooms. This is probably twice the size of my house. And it's, to me, it's three bedrooms. It's right near the road. It's potential rental. It's two three-bedroom houses on a 1.5-acre lot, and that's my direction. I don't know who will live there in the future, but it is what it is. It's, it's a little bit more than what they're reputed to be from what I'm seeing, so that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Austin. I live at 17 Hagerty Hill Road, which is somewhere else. I've lived in my house for almost 50 years, and I've seen a lot of changes, but not on Hagerty Hill Road except for the house west of me, which is the one we're talking about tonight. And I don't know when I first noticed, first it was a small house and a little garage, and then all of a sudden there was a big house, and then there was a big garage. And all of that changed what I saw out of my windows. My house is 100 years old or more, and it has, luckily, it has wonderful big windows. But that side, the west side of my house, I don't enjoy as much anymore because of the structures that are now there. And I think, I was thinking about all the good information that everybody's given you, but there's something else. We're just stewards of the land. We're, we pay to live there, actually, if you think about it. And it belongs to the town, and what does the town want in these places? Do they want to expand at every notion for a variance? Or do they want to look at what's there and what could be changed into something that is not at all what's the word I want? In keeping with what's there now? So I'm, for all the reasons that have been stated and more and better articulated than me, I'm against the proposal. It's not personal, and if I had been on my toes, I might have spoken before about what went up beside me, but I now have a voice for this, and I am against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, anybody else who would like to speak on the application?
We are pretty much, my name is Eddie Rivera, Eddie Rivera, and we are pretty much on the same page that everybody else in the
Where do you folks live?
300 Hugh Road.
But I do walk my dog up the road. Yeah, I'm not gonna repeat everything, but that's pretty much it.
Did you get the address? I'm sorry.
300 Hagerty Hill Road.
I'm almost afraid to ask. Anybody else who would like to speak? All right. First of all, I want to thank everybody for being respectful. We don't always have that, and you've been respectful. We understand the arguments. I myself, you've already heard, I am uncomfortable closing the hearing tonight because we've got so much more information. So I don't know how my board members feel, but
Yeah, I could say.
Okay. All right. So at this point in time, I'm gonna make a motion that we keep the public hearing open. The next public hearing will be December 18. If folks want to submit more information to Chris, you can do so. But we will have another public hearing on the 18th of December. And anyone who wants to be heard again, please attend, and I guess that's really about it.
I just wanted to reiterate the things that we announced at the application board that were in addition to what we have.
Okay, why don't we state them if you want to?
I have, I have four things. There might be others. We wanted to report for Timothy last Wednesday. We wanted to know where the current We wanted to know where the current bathrooms in the garage structure, the half-bath and the full-bath, where does that water waste go now? Um, I'd like to know the detail. It, I have a floor plan of the house that shows the detail on the current apartment. Where, what is that structure? Does it have an exterior door that it's, it's actually really cut off? Um, so I'd just like to see that detail on, on the current apartment. And I'd like to see a floor plan on the upstairs of the garage that shows the full-bath and so that we can see that in addition to everything else we put back. Is there anything else that...
Yeah, if we have the total square footage of the house and the total square footage of the garage, total, on both, please. And I don't know how the other members feel about having the applicant here, if possible.
Uh, okay. So are you also interested in a post? Uh, in other words, uh, if that, if the area of variance were to be granted, uh, isn't there, shouldn't there be a plan for the, how the house is going to be returned to be a single-family home? And there should be, uh, there should be a plan for that because you would be, if you were, got to the point where you were interested in granting the variances, I would assume that you'd be making the condition of the variance is that the house would have to be returned to being a single-family home, that the accessory apartment in the house would have to be, uh, taken out of service, so to speak, as has been represented by the applicant, so...
And that's a very good point.
Yeah, normally on all these kinds of things, we see current state, future state. And in this case, particularly if the applicant is, is saying it only going to be two bedrooms ever, but there's only two bedrooms now and there's going to be two bedrooms in the future, then we're going to see current state renderings to show that, and future state renderings that shows how the house was modified. Does, did, did that make sense? Okay. Thank you.
And, and one last thing I would like, and that goes to Chris, I, I would like to have some more investigation done on, uh, the alterations that were done in the past and may or may not have the appropriate approvals.
So I have another suggestion, which is that, uh, you received a lot of information at this session of the public hearing. Um, I think that it would make sense for, I think everybody should go on site visit for this one.
Absolutely.
And I think you should, my suggestion is that you do your site visit before the next public hearing session so that whatever questions you have for either commenters or for the applicant can be informed with whatever information you get within, you know, making observations during your site visit.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
I agree.
If we want to do that, then we should try and do it before December eighth, and, yeah, and before whatever one, you know, I'd like to be...
Okay, yeah. Um, Davis, is your application, do you want to speak about that?
Sure.
We could try, I live on a Sunday, so Saturday, the seventh, because I think with Thanksgiving this next week...
Dabine, are you the person for the board to talk to about getting, uh, site visit, about making arrangements for site visits?
So you want to shoot for note, uh, for December seventh? That sounds...
I'm not available in the morning. I am available in the afternoon.
Okay.
So is the septic system uncovered right now?
No, we have the public, we have, we have, we have, but I do have pictures documenting what it is and the drawing from the engine room and he, he's, the drawing, he's writing very poorly.
Okay. I just thought that maybe if it was uncovered, you might want to try to get out there.
But I think it's, it's...
No, the weather's an issue.
It's a very good point that we get out there and, and walk the property and walk maybe the neighborhood a little bit, get a lay of land, so...
Are you going to want to get inside the house?
Yes, absolutely.
Not that, I mean, it's not just the garage.
Both structures. We want to see both structures.
I would need, it's December seventh, I need to do it early as possible. So, like nine-thirty?
I, I can't, that morning, I can't after twelve o'clock.
Well, we can do it on different dates.
Yeah, we could do it on a different day. It's not for people.
Okay.
So, do you believe?
Could, could we say ten AM on December seventh for one visit?
December seventh. Or ten AM?
Ten AM.
Ten AM? Does that work for some of us?
Yeah.
And then others can...
I'll figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, Johnny, do you have anything else?
Uh, I don't, uh, I don't have anything.
So...
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
As, uh, Chris, did the planning board submit a response to the referral?
There's one thing I would like to say.
Yeah.
I think that what this board is dealing with is something very vital. We're dealing with heritage or commercial history. And I have a tremendous responsibility as to what's going on in Reinbeck. Even the people, there are so many people who've come in and they're fighting to keep the tradition. And I think that has not been mentioned, and I would like to add this.
Maybe, uh, what is your name and where you reside?
I can't hear.
Your name?
Name, where you reside?
June Plumb.
Twenty-three Hagerty Hill.
Okay. Name?
June Plumb.
June Plumb.
Okay. Thank you.
June Plumb.
Thank you. All right. Is anybody here on Door? Door? Oh, you are? Okay. All right, first of all, um, before I forget, Chris, can you put Dolberg on the last, next time around? I, I didn't, sorry. Um, so, put Dolberg on at the end. All right, so we'll come on up and, um, uh, Mr. Door.
Well, it's different.
It's niche for it.
Oh, you're speaking, okay. She's saying...
What do you think about...
My name is Jerry Trout.
Okay, Jerry. Oh, okay, it's a base.
I'm here because Frederick Door can't be here, he's away. And, um, we are applying for thirty-seven foot parrotance. Very nice.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm glad I was entertaining you. I'm glad I was entertaining you. Come on, Jim. Jim.
Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome. You're welcome. You're welcome. You're welcome. You're welcome. Thank you.
This, is that the same as this? Yeah, I think that's probably the same thing. With the, um, garage, there's a lot of acres, as you can see, but, um, a lot of it is climbed around here. I'm not sure where the wood is. The driveway is right here. And we thought we were putting it back farther than the house, but with the way the road goes, there's two short yards. You have, um, the front of the garage is eighty-nine feet, and this is also the front because of the way the road turns, and that's seventy-one feet. So if the house is a hundred and eighty feet, that means we're going for a thirty-seven foot variance for the front yard. And, uh, I guess that's all there is to it.
Okay, and it doesn't look like there's anybody here who would like to comment on this application?
Maybe some of the other groups want to come back.
Bite your tongue.
The next applicant.
All right, um, all right, it's a pretty simple application. I don't have any questions.
No.
No, you're all worn out. Okay. All right, um, Jerry, thank you very much. And, uh, I'm going to make a motion that we close the public hearing on this matter.
Second?
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Um, I am tasked with, uh, writing this resolution, so I'll give you a call, I'll come out, give a site inspection. Is this, um, we have it marked out? It's state. I was going to say it's at state and all that.
Yeah.
So I should shake, uh, who should I call?
Probably Frederick.
Yeah, maybe we'll call Frederick.
Frederick, do you have this number?
Yeah, I don't know. Is it on the application?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, okay. Okay, I will call and, uh...
Yeah, he's only gone this week.
He'll be back Friday.
Okay, and then I'll let the rest of the gang know if anybody else wants to come out and take a look. All right, thank you. And again, I apologize for getting caught on that last application.
It was interesting.
But that it was. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Sherry Monaco. Oh, wait, you want me to wait for you to tell me?
And the next application, three seasons.
You got it.
All right.
I'm Sherry Monaco from Mayworth. I'm here to represent Cheryl. The violations were cleared on that old permit, um, for the court to tend on duty by Mayworth. And they think that the confirmed three variants were needed. The plan was updated and submitted, and I'm looking at, we're ready to move forward.
Can you just go through a brief? I know it got delayed because of those violations that were cleared.
It did. Um...
Did you submit the revised plan?
I did, and you're here later than that. Two-eight-twenty-one, we're... Chris, there is a, uh, more party. We'll be in a site change, just give an answer, everybody. Um, dated August thirtieth, I brought it in September.
Okay.
We all definitely got copies in the news, and I have this copy. Do you want me to just bring it over?
He's probably got it.
Thank you.
So this shows a twenty-two-foot, two-inch side yard variance, nine in the front. Yeah, I have the actual numbers, I'm sorry. So the side yard variance that's needed is fifteen point three. The front yard is eleven feet. And then placing the accessory structure in front of the principal dwelling in the part of that clip is the other variance that's needed.
Okay.
Um, the fence sits right around there and there's really nowhere else for her to put that garage.
And that's the last house on the right, really?
Yes. Blue fence.
Right, and you showed us what the thing's going to look like. I know you have that in here too.
We have.
Uh, can we keep this yours or something? Yours?
It's mine?
Can you give a copy to Chris?
I can, and I know she has a copy in the file for sure.
What date is that?
This one says August thirtieth, twenty-nineteen.
I have one from eight-twenty-one.
But I will make, no matter what, you have the, um, PDF of it by email, but I can forward it that way or bring you back copies.
My point was just, there's no neighbors to the north, or that would be to the east.
Not close. The, the bridge.
Yeah.
When you're down and you're looking towards, I don't know if it's called a dam, but the water kind of drops down and then there's a big dam that goes over to Staley. There's not a neighbor north of...
And the access road goes around to...
Correct. So Staley is really the next neighbor on the other side.
Other side, yeah. What, what was the difference between, um, the old, so to speak, versus the new? I just found them actually, just going through these.
Measurements were wrong from the middle of the road on one of them. This one had, they had measured from the middle of the road and not from somewhere else.
By the lot, right?
Yes, so we changed it so it was measured properly.
Okay, so that's the difference between the integration, which is improperly measured in.
Correct.
So the side yard is thirty-seven five and the other one is, uh, eleven. And then we have the, uh, the fact that it's ahead of the...
The side yard is permitted at thirty-seven five.
Correct, but...
The proposing's twenty-two.
Twenty-two-two, and then the other one is, uh, the front yard is, is, you have nine feet and you need twenty. Uh, and then the garage is...
We have twenty feet and we need none. We have twenty feet permitted and we need, and nine is proposed, so we need an eleven-foot variance.
Okay, right, right.
It's okay, it's been a really long night.
And, and it's ahead of the, uh, the residence.
Correct.
So those are the three. Okay.
Yes, and winter is coming and she would love to break ground and have this garage that she started in twenty-eighteen.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns on this application? No, it's pretty simple. All right.
I also just want to point out there, I don't, you need, a couple of the houses right there on three-lye have their garages. When you drive past, you see that it's...
Right, and, and we're going to do a site inspection and that's part of what we do is we go and we look and see what the character of the neighborhood is. Does it conform with it, you know? And if everybody else is like that...
It does.
Right. Um, so anyway, at this point in time, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And we'll do a site inspection and we have sixty-two days to get the resolution done. It'll be done by the next meeting.
Wonderful, thank you.
Um, who do we talk to about going out there and taking...
It can be me or Cheryl, and Chris has both our information.
Okay.
I can text Cheryl, help schedule, but I'm happy to come and meet whoever.
Who's lucky enough to get this?
You.
I've got that one too.
You got that one too?
It's been laying around for months and months. Okay, fine.
You've had this one in April.
You had this one in April, thank you. So there.
You just waited for me to get here in August, so thanks.
There you go.
Can't wait to meet you.
All right, so, um, we'll, we'll contact you back to do a site inspection. It's, I assume it's marked out?
It was.
Hopefully it will be...
Yes, I don't know if the flags are still there. I can't tell you how often it's marked out and then you find out, oh, no, I don't...
As long as the, uh, we have pegs or something that stays so we can see generally where this...
You can drive by at fifty miles an hour and see this probably.
You can see this one by slowing down and it's probably safer than pulling in and pulling back.
I just want to make...
They actually have chains across the garage because, across the driveway because people pull in and use their driveway to turn around, so it is safer to do a slow down.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes care of all the public hearings. Uh, let's see, we have Hudson Valley, Reinbeck, that's, that's open till the next meeting. And then we have, we'll do Burnbaum, or why not? It's next. You got the energy?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll go through it.
All right.
We need to prove both of these, right?
Yes, we do.
All right. Resolution of the Town of Reinbeck Zoning Board Appeals in the matter of the area of variance application of Glenn Burnbaum. ZBA case number nine-eight-eight. Background: The applicant is Glenn Burnbaum, referred to hereafter as the applicant. This appeal is from the Town of Reinbeck Zoning Administrator's Determination Letter dated August twenty-ninth of two thousand and eighteen. Property involved: This appeal involves property located at one ten Stone Church Road in the Town of Reinbeck and which bears the tax parcel number one-three-five-zero-eight-nine-six-two-seven-one-zero-zero-three-eight-zero-four-four-two. The applicant's property is twelve-point-zero-six acres in area and is located in the RC five zoning district. Representation: The applicant is represented before this board by himself. Description of the proposed project: The applicant's project is described as follows: To build a wood-framed barn forty feet by sixty feet and store farm equipment. At a later date, he may store hay in there if they have horses on the property. There is currently a shed located on the property as well, but this will be removed before the new barn would be built. There, there is a conservation easement held on the property by Wenaki Land Trust. However, the barn will be built within the approved building envelope. Number of area variances required: The applicant requires one area variance. The area variance set by the applicant is to exceed the aggregate floor area of accessory structures. Section one-two-five-twenty-seven-A four states that all roofed or otherwise enclosed accessory structures, except for agricultural buildings, shall be in the aggregate comprised not more floor area than the principal dwelling on the lot or fifteen hundred square feet, whichever is more restrictive. The request is for four thousand seven hundred ten square feet for a variance of three thousand two hundred ten square feet. ZBA review: Timeliness of appeal: The applicant filed an appeal with this board on September sixteenth, eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, and has paid the requisite fee. The appeal was filed within sixty days of the date of the ZBO's determination appeal from, and thus the application is timely as acquired by section one-two-five, one-two-five-B of the Town of Reinbeck zoning law. Acceptance of application is complete. On September eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, this board deemed the application to be complete and accepted it for review by this board. SECPRA. Should I say that right?
SECPRA.
After accepting this appeal, we determined that this matter should be classified as a type-two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act because the project involves construction, expansion, or placement of minor accessory uh, fruit trimmer, residential structures, including garages, carports, patios, steps, swimming pools, transport, satellite, users, fences, barns, storage sheds, other buildings, not changing or any user density. No further review is required pursuant to SECPRA. Public hearing schedule, referrals and responses. We scheduled a public hearing on October sixteenth at seven thirty-two p.m. and directed the secretary to provide notice of the public hearing in accordance with requirements of section one-two-five, one-two-five-D of the Town of Bryanbeck zoning law, and to refer the application to the following. Dutchess County Planning Department. We determined that this application was not required to be referred to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Economic Development pursuant to section two-three-nine of the New York State General Municipal Law and section one-two-five, one-two-five-E of the Town of Bryanbeck zoning law. Town of Bryanbeck Planning Board. As required by section one-two-five, one-two-five-E of the Town of Bryanbeck zoning law, this application was referred to the Town Planning Board after the September eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen ZBA meeting. The Town Planning Board responded on October twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, and indicated that the requested variance raises no significant planning or environmental concerns, and two, recommends the ZBA rely on its own study of the facts in deciding the application in accordance with the criteria and procedures set forth in Town Code, Chapter one-two-five, Sections one-two-five, one-two-four-C and D, including the input papers. Town of Bryanbeck Conservation Advisory Board. We determined that this application was not required to be referred to the Town of Bryanbeck Conservation Advisory Board. Skip some of the details of these sections that are not required. Town of Bryanbeck Waterfront Advisory Committee. We determined that this application was not required to be referred to the Town of Bryanbeck Waterfront Advisory Committee because the land upon which the project is proposed does not lie within the town's coastal area. Site visit. On November second, two thousand and nineteen, ZBA member Scott Burgin, Timothy Allenbrook, and Catherine Clark visited the applicant's property and the surrounding neighborhood to observe firsthand onsite conditions, property characteristics, setting, surrounding environment, and the character of the surrounding neighborhood. The purpose of this site visit was to observe the property and the surrounding area to inform board members for the upcoming decision. The site visit was conducted solely to gather information, and no business or deliberations were conducted during the site visit. The public hearing on this appeal was duly advertised and held at Town Hall on October sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen. During the course of the public hearing, we received comments from neighbor Ed Stickley, who also lives on Stone Church Road. He appeared and supported Mr. Burnbaum's project. He said, says Glenn purchased the property that has made a hundred eighty-degree turn and is beautiful. He thinks anything Glenn does will be fine, and he has no problem with his project whatsoever. A letter was also received dated nine-thirty, two thousand and eighteen, from Wenaki Land Trust, LLC, approving the location of the proposed accessory barns within the designated building envelope of the parcel, subject to the conservation easement. The public hearing was closed on October sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Findings of fact and conclusions of law. Balancing test. In our review of the variance sought, we have considered the benefit to the applicant if the variance is granted as weighed against the detriment to health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. We determine that the variance requested should be granted because there is no detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by the granting of this variance. Consideration of five factors in the balancing test. In our review of the variance sought and consideration of the balancing between the benefit to the applicant as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community, we have considered the five factors required by section one-two-five, one-two-four-C one of the Town of Bryanbeck zoning law as follows. If the variance is granted, will it cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or cause a detriment to nearby properties? We find the answer to this question is no. The proposed barn will be located in an area of the property that is screened by a rise in elevation on all four sides. It will not be visible from any neighboring structures. It will enhance the property functionally and aesthetically. Can the benefits sought by the applicant? App- applicant.
Yeah, I've seen that a couple.
Yeah. Chris, I think you actually picked up, um... Okay, you did pick up at least Dave's words are in here, so that's okay. There were a couple of other changes. That one should be applicant. On B, can the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance? We find the question, answer to this question is no. The other non-residential structure on the property is fully utilized. In order to provide covered storage for additional equipment and hay, new structure is needed. A building of any size would require a variance. Is the requested area variance substantial? We find the question, the answer to this question is no. Although the area variance requested is substantial in the number of square feet, it is not substantial in terms of its location on the lot and its size in relation to other structures in the neighborhood. As a traditionally designed wooden barn, it is complementary to the size to other structures in the area. Situated on a parcel that is more than twice the size of a minimum lot allowed in RC five, it will enhance the property with no detriment to the neighborhood. Will the proposed variance have an adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions in the district or neighborhood? We find the answer to this question is no. The barn will be located within a building envelope approved by the Wenaki Land Trust. And there were a couple of suggested edits here. I, I sent you a file that I thought you might have gotten a little bit later today. I'll resend it tomorrow.
Yeah.
They're, they're not content edit, I mean, they're not edits in terms of the tone of the resolution. They're, they're just small edits.
Okay.
The barn will be located within a building envelope approved by the Wenaki Land Trust. It will not be visible from any of the surrounding residents, and will not require the felling of any trees. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? We find the answer to this question is yes. The applicant could forego building an additional structure, but this would limit his ability to provide agricultural support to the surrounding small production farms. Minimal variance required. In addition to our review of the five factors in balancing test, we also determine if this requested variance, is the minimum variance necessary and adequate to accomplish what is requested by the applicant, and that also preserves and protects the character of the neighborhood. We find the answer to this question is no, but these are, um, so basically I accepted Dave's edits. I thought they were, were fine. But the, but given the size and design are in keeping with the barns in the area, and the request for a forty-by-sixty-foot barn appears not unreasonable. Result of the balancing test. Based on our analysis of the five factors discussed above, and the consideration of having the minimal variance requested, we find that the balancing test favors granting area variance sought. Now, therefore, be it resolved based on all of the facts described above and upon the reasoning described above as follows. The ZBA hereby grants the variance from zoning law one-two-five-two-seven-A four, finding that the benefit to the applicant outweighs any detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. Area variance for total accessory structure square footage. Section one-two-five-two-seven-A four states that all roofed or otherwise enclosed accessory structures, except for agricultural buildings, shall in the aggregate comprise not more floor area than the principal dwelling on the lot, or fifteen hundred square feet, whichever is more restricted. The request is for a total of four thousand seven hundred ten square feet, a variance of three thousand two hundred and ten square feet. Our decision is supported by a balancing of the five factors as discussed above. Section two. The ZBA hereby grants the variance from zoning law one-two-five-two-seven-A four, subject to the conditions stated below. The shed to the front of the property will be removed. The building will be constructed within the building envelope in accordance with and within design standards established by the existing conservation easement. The granting of this variance shall also be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the Town of Bryanbeck of any and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with the application in full compliance with Article fourteen, what is? Fee reimbursement of the Town of Bryanbeck zoning law. This variance shall not be deemed granted until all such fees are paid and fulfilled by the applicant. The granting of the variance does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and or approvals. The proposed structures must be constructed in conformity with the application and plans submitted. The area variance shall be null and void unless the proposed condition is commenced within one year of this resolution.
Well done.
Sorry for the little choppy video there.
I, I, we went out there and did the site inspection. It's a beautiful piece of property. He's done a wonderful job with it. And as far as I'm concerned, the, the placement of the barn is, is perfect. It's really the only place it can be. It's too bad, almost, I think that it...
It's not visible.
That it's not visible, because it's, it's so nice. He did such a nice job, so, uh, I, I'm all for it. I don't know what the rest of the gang thinks, but, uh, what does the rest of the gang think?
In favor.
Ready to go? There you go. All right. Do you wanna make a motion that we accept the resolution?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, I'll second it. Chris?
Okay, got it. Scott Bergen?
Yes.
Catherine Clark?
Yes.
Richard MacRusso?
Yes.
David Fies?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
I have a, a copy. I'll resend it to you.
I'll double-check the seat in the morning.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
Scott, I'm gonna be away next, next meeting. I will get, I'm working on Jacob, and I'll get that.
Do you wanna discuss those matters that we closed this evening? Just very briefly, this group wanna go on the resolutions.
Sure.
I don't think it's gonna take very long before we get to the, the last.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
And we, we talked about Patron. Mr. Patron, I, I thought, I don't have any problem with that resolution. So I think that should be in the affirmative. That's my opinion, but does anybody have another opinion? He's the, the first gentleman, the deck.
The deck, the deck on that.
Yeah, that, that was...
See, I'll have that ready for me.
Uh, Jacob, I also thought made sense. Anybody have any issues with that?
None.
I'm, I'm doing a little writing now.
Right. Uh, door. I, I moved in there before with that as well, but I don't know what the rest of the gang thinks.
Yeah, that was pretty lucky.
Yeah, I thought, I thought so. I was gonna write it up, I think that's, that's mine. So I'll write that up in the affirmative, and Bricee, I didn't think it was a problem either, but, uh, what's the rest of the gang thinking?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so, uh, you have Bricee.
Notice you skipped over Aggadale.
Huh? Aggadale, let's see.
Golden.
Oh, golden, yeah, well, that's, that's still open.
Yeah, because there are quite a few of these.
No, these are all closed. I went Patron's closed, Jacob's is closed. Yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're gonna do some reading in December.
Oh, lovely. Yeah, we're gonna do some site visits?
I'll, I'll read them all.
Yeah, then...
Yeah, that would be a good way to, uh, finish things off.
I'll get them done right away.
Yeah, no, that's why it skipped over, because it's open. The rest of them are closed, and the, the rest of them, I think, are all pretty easy. All right, great. The last thing on the agenda is the, uh, the plat interpretation, and, um, I think John was able to send, I hope. I, I got a copy of the, the, a, a draft.
Yes.
Resolution.
Yep.
For the record, I, I've been speaking with John.
Did you wanna have a meeting with your, you had indicated at a, on a, during your prior conversations about the possibility of wanting to have an attorney-client meeting to ask for legal advice regarding some of the legal standards that would apply? And, um, anyway, if you wanna do that, I'm happy to stay tonight and talk to you, but that's up to you.
Or we can simply discuss, um, you know, I, I can discuss where I felt the thing should go, and then the rest of you guys can give me input, give John input.
Sure.
I mean, that's, did, did you guys get a chance to review that? And John, you did a very nice job. It's, uh, it's a draft, it's, but it's twenty-three pages, and it's, it's very thorough.
We tried to reflect as best we could. The, the board members have had the opportunity to make statements and ask questions in the public meetings that have taken place so far. We were able to use those cues, uh, to be able to make some suggestions for, as to what we think you're thinking, um, based on the evidence. So that draft that's been presented to you is, of course, you know, subject to whatever changes this board wants to make. That's really just suggestions based on what we've been listening to you saying so far.
And, and, um, the input, I, I, I've spoke with John and, and Kim, and, um, this, I think, fairly reflects the way I wanted to go, the way I felt on this thing. But again, that's why we're talking about it, just to see the rest of you guys, what your opinions are on the, on the, uh, the rationale behind it. The bottom line here is, and if you just really go to, I think, page twenty-two, is that, and there's a great analysis and pictures and everything else from the site visits, et cetera, is that, um, it was my feeling, after looking at all of the evidence, that the, the operation of pharmacy tables did not comport with the definition of agriculture. When you, you read the definition as a whole, and you read the entire zoning law, and it, it just didn't mean it. To me, to me, it's, it is a trucking concern. It, it does not come under the umbrella of being agricultural, uh, use. And the other thing is, I, I did not see it as a wholesale kind of operation. I disagreed with the town on that point. I, I, I just didn't see that.
And the zoning enforcement officer.
And the zoning enforcement officer. But...
I thought the phrase, the part of the definition, is very good. I really need it. Does that have floated through my mind without landing? But, uh...
Uh, we, we discussed that. That definition just cribbed in large part from the State Agriculture and Markets Law, something that's not uncommon in zoning, by the way. But that definition is, uh, it's not what, an ideal for statute drafting, for sure. But I think that when you do break it out, as, as was broken out in that table, where you take the pieces out and really look at them, and look at each piece completely, it's a lot easier to understand, uh, when you do that.
Yeah, and the, the first part of it, the wholesale business, that was easy. I just didn't see that argument at all. But going through the definition of agriculture, when you really break it down, it, it kinda confirmed what I was feeling all along, that it, you know, it really isn't agricultural. It's a, it's a...
I thought the most, the most compelling argument was kinda funny there, which is, you're not a restaurateur if you're transporting restaurant equipment.
Yeah.
And, you know, you're not a quarryman if you're transporting rocks. So I think that's a great...
It's a great analogy, absolutely. And, and I think it's on all fours. Uh, the other aspect is that, um, you know, the operation violates, uh, section one-twenty-five, one-thirty-five of the zoning law, and that, you know, we're supposed to have...
One vehicle.
One vehicle, twenty, I think it's one, one vehicle of twenty foot or less in a residential area, and the trucks there were, there were four of them, but they were over twenty feet.
Twenty foot or more.
Twenty foot or more. So there's a violation there as well. So, um, added it, I believe, as I recollect, there were three points that the ZBO made. I agreed with two of them, I disagreed with one of them, but ultimately it came down to the, the fact that, um, you know, the... I disagreed with one of them, but ultimately came down to the fact that, you know, this operation is not, yeah, it is not appropriate in this area. It's not an agricultural use, and it violates Section 125-135 of the zoning code. So that's where I came down. I'd like to hear.
Did you, did you find the town board's input to be helpful in this case?
Yeah, to some degree, yeah. I mean, it's always nice to get that, I think, but they also made the argument on the wholesale, which I didn't buy. I, I, yeah, I didn't buy. But it was helpful. I mean, I, listen, I got to say that I thought the applicant and everybody else did a very good job making, you know, very good arguments. There were very good arguments on both sides, very compelling arguments on both sides. But, you know, when you really break down the definition of agriculture, you see that there's a violation of code because of the size of the trucks. It was not an easy, it was an easy decision for me to write it, have John write it up the way that John is, is the one who wrote it, you know, with my input, or Tim, actually. But this is a draft, and it can change. And so what say you?
I think it's good common sense.
I had a couple of comments on the letter, but nothing that changes much, so I'll send those to you.
Okay.
I think John, or the draft, really captures what we said at the public hearing by those for and those against, in particular by the board members. The draft takes up many of the information arguments presented. I know in my particular case, I mentioned something about commercial plates, and that's in there, and many other things which I mentioned that are in there. Thank you. Great job.
I think it really reflects the process of discussion and that you broke out the definitions and all of the inside material really well, so I think it's very nice. Basically agreeing with, with Roni and Matt.
Okay, then what we will do next is clean it up a little bit more. I think it's in pretty good shape, and then we're going to have a special.
Do you have individual comments? You can email them to me.
Are we okay time-wise, John?
What's that?
We're okay time-wise?
No.
We don't have to add.
Well, you're going to need a special meeting to adopt the final version of the decision.
All right.
So you may want to talk about that. You won't have to be, you know, you'll only have to be here for that item of business.
But maybe first week in December or something like that. We, as usual, we miss the 62 days by one day.
Of course.
Then you don't think you'd grant us a day exception?
I just prefer that we have a special meeting and take care of that special meeting. It's not, it's okay.
Catherine, are you going to be out of town a little bit?
I'm going to be out of town again.
Well, what's your schedule? We can work around your schedule.
I leave on the 8th, and I come back on the 7th.
The 7th is a Saturday.
Yeah.
Do you want to do it the first week in December?
I think you should.
Does that, Chris, does that work? Can we get here maybe Wednesday, whatever it is, the 3rd or something or other?
Fourth is the first Wednesday of the week, the month, December.
You know, if this space is available, we could actually meet downstairs too.
Yeah, December 4th is a Wednesday.
Does that sound good?
Yes, from my perspective.
Two weeks. Two weeks from now.
You good?
I'm, I'm good depending on the time. We'll do it at 7?
Yeah, 7 is good. We'll try out our new time.
It has to be us, right?
Yes. Well, it has to be.
Do you need me here?
It has to be.
Yeah, yes, probably, yeah, we have to go through that process.
Oh, it's going to be a special open meeting.
Is there any time in two weeks to post it?
So is December 4th a Friday?
It's December 4th.
Oh, Wednesday, Doctor.
Do we have enough, how much lead time do we have to post? This seems to suggest 16 days, doesn't it?
Scott, there's no chance of going to be.
For a special meeting?
No, not, not personally.
And two weeks is okay for me to just, I'll check the calendar tomorrow and make sure we're okay for some of that.
Yeah, just to make sure that the room's available.
So we're good, we can do it the 4th as far as time?
I gotta check the, oh, I guess we could do it downstairs.
Right, yeah, I'm not worried about the location. I'm worrying about the timeframe and doing the noticing.
Oh, that, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I can get out a special meeting soon if I can confirm the room being, or.
Okay, so why don't we do this, see if we can get a room? Regardless, we'll figure it out. Just make it December 4th, and let's get that notice out.
7 o'clock.
Take 7:00, and we'll get it done.
So, like 7 to 11, I'm sure, okay?
No, 7 to 7:15.
Yeah, okay, good luck with that.
I'm just going to read the resolution. Okay?
Yes, we'll do, as we've done in the past with the decisions of this length, you'll have a decision, and then we'll do a separate shorter resolution.
Yeah.
And then you'll just use that to adopt.
25 pages, no.
But what we will do also that night is, we will bring, Chris will bring with us maybe 10 copies of the, of the final decision, so that it will be available. Members of the public will be able to take home a copy of the decision, so they'll be informed as to what's done.
I don't want to meet some meeting with Jordan?
Well, that's right.
I said that.
Okay, so all in favor? All right. Thank you, Jordan. Have a good night.
Thank you.